Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Jenny Hall, Director of Community and Economic Development, and I am joined this morning by Andy Taylor of Echo Northwest Consultants for Dr. Cog as well as Adams County related to housing needs assessments, and also Development Policy Analyst Ben Fulton and Alyssa Sherry, our Housing Policy and Community Investments Manager. So this morning, we are going to be presenting to you the outcomes of the Regional Housing Needs Assessment that was led by Dr. Cog. As some of you will probably recall, both Peter Lefari of Maker Housing Partners and myself were part of the advisory group on this work, and then Andy's firm Echo Northwest was leading that. This is part of the public comment period on the Regional Housing Needs Assessment Tool. But we're going to conclude, after Ben goes through that presentation, with a little bit of talk about our kickoff for our own housing needs assessment and some of the work we'll be continuing to do with Andy. So with that, I am going to pass things over to Ben, and then I've got a couple of additional slides I'm going to pass out that drill down a little bit deeper on some Adams County data.
Okay, as many of you I'm sure are familiar, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment was initiated by the Dr. Cog Board of Directors in 2023 in response to many of the region's pressing housing challenges. The report, which I really think I encourage everyone to read if you haven't had the opportunity to do so, it's a relatively short, 23-page digestible report. It provides really great information and creates a shared foundation to understand how much housing the region needs, where that housing needs to be located, and at what price points to serve the needs that we have currently and in the future. The report also provides really valuable insights on the scale and scope of housing needs so that we can all across the region develop strategies that match the reality on the ground. There we go. So as you all are very familiar with, while there's a lot of analysis and discussion about the national housing market, housing markets are even more than just state-based, are regional. People make really critical decisions every day about where they're going to live based on a really wide variety of factors, and that often cross jurisdictional boundaries, particularly here in Adams County, across municipal and county lines. And so things like jobs, what they can afford, the quality of the schools, other amenities, and access to outdoor and natural opportunities, childcare, all kinds of things that we all obviously think about when we make decisions about where we're going to live. So as part of the Dr. Cog Regional Housing Needs Assessment, there was a really robust process that included quite a bit of stakeholder engagement to try to make sure that a lot of the people who have, you know, a lot to say about these issues and have a lot of information and data and perspective to provide were able to contribute to this process. So just on this kind of spectrum here, you can see a wide variety of different folks who played a role in producing this analysis. We have folks from the kind of private sector, you know, housing developers, finance professionals, infrastructure folks, obviously a lot of public sector participation as well from city and county staff, as well as, you know, housing advocates and nonprofit groups in the climate sectors, home builders associations, and then obviously a lot of staff expertise, both from consultants and others who participated. So it was a really robust process to make sure that everyone who had perspective to share could do so while this was being developed. So let's talk quickly about one of the many housing laws that were passed in 2024, SB 24174, the Sustainable Affordable Housing Act. This act was passed towards the end of session in 2024. It had bipartisan support and had support from quite a number of local governments, including from Adams County. Among many other requirements in the law related to housing planning, it requires that local governments conduct methodologically compliant housing needs assessments by the end of 2026. So local governments are encouraged to do that, but they're also encouraged to participate in regional housing needs assessments as well. And so local governments were exempt from that requirement if they conducted, or if, sorry, if they participated in a methodologically compliant regional housing needs assessment. And so as part of that process, DOLA and the state reviewed Dr. Cog's analysis and determined that it was, it did meet the compliance threshold established in the law and produced by DOLA's guidance. So with that, the local governments who participated in Dr. Cog's regional analysis could count that towards their compliance if the governing body reviewed that housing needs assessment at a public meeting and submits comments on that presentation to Dr. Cog in a particular 60-day window, which falls between the middle of July and the middle of September, right here today. So I'll just note, as many of you already know, Adams County has historically conducted its own local HNA's and has always participated in regional analyses as well. And so as Jenny mentioned, CED has already secured grant funds and partnered with Echo Northwest to conduct a compliant local housing needs assessment that will provide even more rich and valuable detailed data for us to act on as we build housing action plans and do all the work that we need to do to kind of address those needs. But by conducting the study session today, we are ensuring that there is no chance we will miss the statutory deadline for that HNA process. So this is a really great opportunity for us that we wanted to take advantage of and also just share some of the really interesting findings from this report. So let's talk about those. The summary of key findings, these are the top four that really stood out for Dr. Cog. You know, despite periodic booms in building, they found that the region is not producing enough housing to keep pace with population and job growth, that low-income households have been hit the hardest and represent the greatest need for additional housing. And if you've been listening to our both outgoing state demographer and now current new demographer, the population in Colorado is aging. There are also changes across the country related to household size and other trends. And that requires a real diverse need of different types of housing to meet all of those different people kind of where they are. And so those housing types and the affordability of those various types are not evenly, surprisingly, not evenly distributed around the region. There are different pockets of different parts of the region that need to address things differently and strategically to maximize the opportunities we have and make sure that everybody has access to a housing that they can afford and enjoy.
Yeah, I have a quick, thank you very much. So the top bullet point that we're not producing enough housing, yeah, that sounds familiar from other reasons I've been, but do you happen to know at what point, at what point in time they're referencing that this, because I know, I have a couple of different dates in my head. I was curious if you could know off the top of your head, like when we really started to fall short of our?
Yeah, I would say Andy's front.
Or whoever, yeah. Anybody on the panel?
Yeah, yeah.
Around the time of the Great Recession, the 2000s would be where some of that underproduction really took hold and kept up. So while we did have major building in that period since, it hasn't kept pace with the amount of household growth that we've had. We really consumed a lot of what was built up, the surplus that was built before the Great Recession, and haven't kept pace since.
So we just, the rebound, there was a rebound, but it was not, we didn't come back to really where we needed to be. It has fallen short since then.
Correct. Compared to some of the other regions that we've worked with, some of the other communities we've worked with, we do actually have a lot more housing construction than other regions. And so we are, I think, working from a better position of strength in terms of building. There are other regions that aren't building as much, but it still isn't quite keeping pace and it's pinching folks.
Thank you.
Okay, so top line, some of the really big top line numbers that I think are important to kind of talk about in some context here. So the report finds that the current and future needs across the income spectrum mean that Denver region needs to build around 500,000 units by 2050. And to stay on track to reach that goal, the region should work towards building 223,000 new units by 2032. So that's where you can kind of see that spectrum that, you know, is trying to kind of balance both the current and future needs of the region. That's perfect. And so when you kind of think about how this, you know, this analysis kind of breaks down the current need, what's the kind of current gap between where we'd be if things were where we want them to be right now? That's where 69,000 of those units come from. And then the additional 154,000 are about building towards our future need as time kind of passes. And so those 223,000 units need to, you know, in order to keep pace, Dr. Cog has found those need to kind of come online between 2023 and 2032. So yeah, let's go to the next slide here. So just like I said earlier, the distribution of that need is not even. There are smaller gaps at certain income thresholds. So what you're looking at might be a little small there, but what you're looking at on this graph is the number of housing units needed from a demand and, you know, perspective. And then the supply is actually like how much of that square is being filled up. So the bigger the white gap, the more housing units needed at that AMI threshold. And so what you can see here is that the, there's a really big need for folks who have between, who are below 50% AMI. That accounts for a really big percentage of the housing needs in the region. There are still gaps, you know, particularly at 50 to 80%, but they get a little smaller at that 80 to over 120 threshold where they're, you know, the supply is getting closer and closer to meeting demand. But really at that bottom kind of quintile there, there's a real challenge to meet the needs of folks at that income threshold. So in kind of, oh yes, please, please, please.
So just, so this, so what's in orange, just, just?
Yes, yes, yes.
Anybody who's listening.
Yes.
So what the numbers in orange, so for example, the 231,400, that's existing inventory?
Yes, as of 2023, yes.
These, okay, so these, those are the numbers that we, so we really see the largest, highest percentage by far of housing is in the over 120% of AMI.
Is where there is, where the?
The largest inventory.
Demand, yes. And, and yeah, it's also that number on the top of the box isn't the gap in the white. That's the total number and?
Yes, thank you. Yes, yeah, so it's just, so in between, I'd have to do math in my head.
Yeah, it's like 100. So yeah, for 0 to 50, I think it's about 135,000.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding that the orange pill, that the numbers inside the orange portion was indicating current even.
Yes, that's correct. And so you can see that the, you know, the, just the volume of units at that threshold are pretty significant, you know, more than 0 to 80% combined. So yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, it's a great question. So in actually developing this analysis, Dr. Cog looked at a number of different factors to project both the current gap and the future need. And so none of these factors would be surprising. These are all things that would dictate how much housing a region might need. So things about what's the current population, what's the future population look like? How does the, how do migratory patterns change? Transportation access, both what's available currently, but also planned. Future transit and looking at commuting patterns and commuting times to kind of gauge where people might be looking to live. Obviously, employment, huge driver of where people decide to live. Where are jobs now? Where do we project jobs to move into the future? And then looking at a lot of obviously housing statistics around vacancy rates, you know, the access to affordable units and just overall supply metrics. There's a long list of things in the methodology they look to, but just when we start to look at what these data points look like for Adams County, I think it's helpful to think about these are the factors that went into kind of producing some of those numbers. So this assessment provides, like I said earlier, some really good data on the scale and scope of housing needs so that communities around the region can develop strategies that match the reality on the ground. This regional analysis really helps us understand that, but really more from a kind of top-down level, right? So if you're developing a regional analysis, you're going to look at these things all kind of region-wide, and then you're going to roll those down to the, to the kind of communities within that region. There's a lot of really interesting stuff in the report about how they broke down different sectors within Dr. Cog and then how they developed the individual statistics, which are all great. But as Jenny already mentioned, we're going to get a really great kind of bottom-up analysis through our own local HNA that will have even more kind of Adams County-specific data who really provide us with the hyper-specific information we need to develop our balanced housing plan, housing action plans, things like that. So let's take a look at some graphs here. So as you will see, this is the projections for that 2023 to 2032 need broken down by the income categories. And this should not surprise, given that we're looking at, when we looked at that graph previously, where was the biggest gap? It was from 0 to 50. So it's unsurprising that the 0 to 50% AMI would be the area where most, you know, that needs to be served with quite a few housing units out of the kind of 36,500 that are projected over that 10-year window. That said, there is, there is still a need across all of these AMI thresholds. And as I'm sure many, you know, we're all familiar with, there's a lot of filtering that happens as well. People move, you know, up and out of certain homes, and those homes as they age start to move down and become more kind of quote-unquote like naturally affordable. And so that's why there's always a need to kind of build housing across the spectrum. But this analysis is really helpful in kind of helping us think about the targeting. I will add that this three, there's 36,500 number is incorporated of all Adams County municipalities within it, as well as unincorporated Adams. The analysis from Dr. Cog suggests that about 7,610 units are needed for unincorporated Adams in particular. And so those thresholds are, you know, you can kind of see them in the handout. They're very kind of similarly scaled. And so those are, that's kind of what this analysis shows for Adams County, as well as if you look at the printed handout, you can look at unincorporated Adams kind of singled out.
I do find it interesting that, again, the over 120% AMI is a larger, they're showing a larger percentage of need in that category than immediately, the next lower category immediately from 100 to 120% AMI.
Middle housing.
What's that?
The middle housing, just, I agree that the greater than 120%.
And is that, so is that, is that, what is that based on? I mean, is that, that they think that we really, because that's, those are all going to be your single-family detached and going into semi-custom and custom homes?
Yeah, so even at 120% AMI, we're not, we're not talking about, you know, purely luxury homes.
No, no, not at all.
So.
Definitely single-family detached. For the most part, I mean, it could be some duplexes that are maybe going higher end or something like that.
Sure, definitely. And I do think that the, you know, there is some of that idea of kind of filtering. You know, a lot of the housing that gets built that's new, you know, may end up falling in that category, but by people moving into those units, they then open up a unit that maybe is more affordable for someone further down the AMI scale. But I'd love to ask Andy if he has thoughts on this too about, you know, how that?
And one quick question.
Oh, yeah, please.
So when, and with the missing middle.
Sure.
Is that, what income levels or does that encompass? Is that like fit, is that going all the way from 50% AMI up to 100%? What, because we hear a lot of conversations about that. And I think entry-level housing and the missing middle is a big conversation, especially in Colorado with the lack of condos because of construction defect and those things we all know. But so what const, on this chart, which of these categories fall into what is generally referred to as the missing middle?
Andy elaborate more. I do think it's important in all of the conversations we'll have about housing today and going forward. The missing middle gets used kind of both in terms of typology, right? Like cottage court homes, right? We talked about those being missing middle, but then we also talked about the income, the AMI level. And they're not always one-to-one because, right, you can have a luxury condominium, you can have a more affordable condominium. And so we'll try to make sure that we're being specific as we talk about those things, but.
Yeah, it can be a range and it'll, I was just looking at a market analysis we were doing in a different area, and it'll change based on rent versus own on what AMI levels you're reaching. But it will start to get in some of those 80 to 120 can be some of what's getting, that needs getting met for missing middle housing. The reason that that 120-plus category looks so big is because it's representing almost over half the households. Because just the way we're doing more fine-grained breakdown below 120% of AMI. So that category is carrying a lot of weight, just in terms of the number of households that fall into it.
Thank you.
And it does, we do still want to recognize that because when we aren't meeting that need, folks are competing downward for housing opportunities with some of these other.
Thank you, I appreciate those, yeah, thank you for those comments.
Yeah. Okay, so let's talk about housing burden next. And so this chart is really focused on the proportion of rented homes in the community where households are spending 30-plus percent, which is the burden, the kind of orange category there, or 50-plus percent of their income on housing costs. And so as you can see, you know, over the course of a, you know, a little over 20 years, the, you know, the share of Adams County in these align with what you'll see across a lot of the region. You know, the share of folks who are in that severely burdened has increased significantly. And just overall, we're looking at, you know, about half the population of Adams County being in a kind of either burdened or severely burdened category. And again, not surprising if we think about how much housing inflation has taken place, particularly in Colorado between 2000 to 2022, how much the population has changed. And just like Andy was talking about earlier, the, you know, a lot of the structural factors and other factors that made it difficult to kind of keep up with that growth in the period kind of post-Great Recession until, you know, a little bit more recently. I will just note for unincorporated Adams, these kind of ratios are very similar. They're pretty much the same. It's a little bit, it's gotten a little bit, there's a little bit larger percentage in Adams County, unincorporated Adams, but we're talking within a percentage point or two. So it's, it's very similar. Okay, so I think this is also really helpful to understand the different types of, you know, kind of dwelling unit opportunities across Adams County. And I'll say these are really similar between Adams and unincorporated Adams with a few distinctions that I'll, I'll talk about here in a second. But, you know, I don't think it would be a surprise to folks who live and work in Adams County that, you know, more than 50% of the homes in the county overall are detached, single-family homes. And that if you account for attached kind of townhomes and rowhouse, things like that, we're starting to push towards, you know, 65, 70% of the housing units. This is, this is not the kind of growth trajectory. This is like the current status of the housing stock. And so the, the kind of next kind of second, the kind of more multifamily units are represent a smaller piece of our current pie. The one big, you know, difference, I think, when you look at Adams County versus unincorporated Adams is the share of the kind of mobile home population is, is one big difference, you know, between Adams and unincorporated Adams. But this is the kind of starting, this is our kind of stock as of 2022. But as we know, a lot of things have changed over the last couple of years. There's been a lot of growth in multifamily opportunities up the region, really. Drive around and see all the cranes, that's a lot of what they're going to be built. Oh, yes.
And just to clarify here, so it says municipality Adams County. This is unincorporated Adams County, correct?
This far right here is Adams County overall?
If you look on, here, they've got, if you look on these slides, they gave us a hard copy.
Oh, yeah.
That's just the more.
That's the difference.
Information on.
So on the paper, in the top one, Adams County only municipality?
No, everything, unincorporated and municipalities.
And down below is just unincorporated.
Yes, I'm looking at this and Dr. Cog has produced this really amazing dashboards that allows you to go down and download all this data in Excel, but also create some of these charts using their dashboard, which is really cool. And the term that they use for the Y-axis there is just municipality. It could be jurisdiction or any other kind of term.
Okay, so unincorporated Adams County will be listed as such?
Yes.
Thanks.
And Adams County includes both all the incorporated areas and the unincorporated.
Total population.
Population, yep.
Want to just clarify?
Yeah, that was great. It was really great that they were able to actually dive down and split some of the regions by unincorporated and the kind of overall, because you all know, like, that's much more useful for us here to understand that.
Thanks for these slides, yeah.
Absolutely. So that's the end of the kind of walking through some of this data. Happy to answer any questions. Happy to, to answer any questions before we kind of start the conversation about the local HNA. But if there are questions on the, the slides we presented, just happy to answer those.
I'd like to add one comment here too. As part of the compliance, the board has to make comment or can choose not to make comment on the regional housing needs assessment. And then we have to submit that, those comments to DOLA.
Yep. So the, the, the questions and comments you guys have already been providing are part of that record. You know, that we'll, we will summarize and share with them as well, so according from your presentation.
Also, as, as noted, we have until September twelfth for this public comment period. So as you take this presentation and, and think about it a little bit, if you dive in and actually want to look more closely at the report, you can certainly email us comments anytime between now and September twelfth that we can include with what we share back.
Absolutely.
Julie? I have a, a quick question on the slide that, that's titled identifying local housing needs. And I guess I just want to understand the model.
Sure.
When it comes specific to transportation, how is that impacting the assessment of housing needs for the region?
It's a great question. I, I think Andy probably best positioned answering that, yeah.
So this is helping communicate about how we're going from that big regional number.
Yeah.
And distributing that down so that the local governments, different jurisdictions can see what their share is. And so the, some of the biggest factors, as you'll see on here, are related to housing and employment and tying those to those shares. But at Dr. Cog, they also wanted to build in things around current transit access and future transit investments as well of, of where, also related to commute time. So that's helping build into those factors that, that draw down those, those weights that figure out how we take, go from a big number at a regional or sub-market level and then down to a jurisdiction level number. So it's, it's helping with what we would call a distribution or allocation model.
So is the assumption that people who have, or jurisdictions that have more transportation opportunities or more future transportation opportunities will then require more housing?
I think it's more around, just as one factor among many, that population employment are still really key factors. But trying to align this also with the forecast that Dr. Cog does for its regional transportation plan and some of the other goals around growth and development and where the region in that work wants to grow. And so to try and meet some of those other goals related to future transportation use of trying to locate more growth in some of these areas that may be able to handle some of that growth because of the transportation access.
Interesting, all right. I just thought that that was an interesting bubble to pull into an analysis for housing. The other three make sense, of course, but transportation I thought was pretty interesting, just given the fact that like, yes, there is transit, for example, the N-line is planned, but it's not like it's coming.
It's on map. You can see that, like, if it was planned on, on maps, you could say, oh, it's come, yeah.
They would love to have that. So I was just kind of curious, and, and especially with the front-range passenger rail, like, does that mean that we're planning on it happening? I don't know, transportation tends to move very slow, so tying it to housing needs is, is an interesting concept. But it's definitely something I'm going to dive more into.
Yeah, and I, I can specifically like pinpoint, there's a, in one of the appendices, there's a really interesting, if you're a nerd like me about these things, where it breaks down the kind of, for current and future conditions, what's the criteria, the method used and the data source? And so on transportation, they talk about looking at the, calculating the travel distance of different census blocks to the nearest transit amenity in our RTD data, kind of as it exists now. And then looking into the future, looking at the, the share of developable land proximate to planned rapid transit system networks. And so they kind of.
That's great.
So there's some, so there's some cool stuff that they were able to kind of tease out in this analysis to like, look at both like the existing RTD stations, as well as, you know, what's Dr. Cog's kind of rapid transit system network for twenty fifty plan look like. But you're right, I mean, it is a, you know, I think it, given Dr. Cog's kind of emphasis on transportation historically, it's a, it's a unique angle that they're able to kind of bring in here and provide some really kind of rich data for us.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Do they have also that for, that similar type of breakdown for employment for all of these categories?
Yeah, so they talk about job projections for, you know, the share, both looking at the regional population as well, as the share of regional jobs, both from a kind of, you know, looking at existing data as well as forecasting out. And so that's really the, I think they, they kind of focus on there. And then in the housing, it's a lot of kind of sub-market analysis that, that, you know, looking at vacancy rates and things like that.
So I have two questions. It's probably already been sent to us, but could you please send the link to the whole?
Absolutely, yes, 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 yes.
We'll do that.
I'll also send you the link to the dashboard, because I think dashboards really. Yeah, it's fun.
So we can get confused and ask you more questions?
Yeah.
And then, secondly, so the breakdown that you were able to do for unincorporated versus Adams County as a whole, can each municipality do that for their own?
Yes, yes, they can.
Each city can also say, you know, Thornton and Northland can look at how they stack up against the county as well.
As far as I remember, it goes down into that level of detail for most municipalities. I think there's probably a threshold.
Yeah, it doesn't get into the, you wouldn't be able to break down if communities in more than one county. They would just get a number for their whole jurisdiction. But, but yeah, they would, for, I think, every jurisdiction, I don't know. It rounds, so there's, I think, some, some level of preciseness for, for some of the smaller jurisdictions.
Yeah, you're not going to look at like Aurora, you know, in Adams versus, you know, in a different county or, you know what I mean? But I do think that you can look at Aurora or, you know, Harvada or something like that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
So kind of wrapping up this piece of it, we will send you a single email that has those links, as well as a kind of a reminder of, okay, you can still provide comments and how we'll collect those for you. Commissioner Mulca, of course, is continuing on as our Peter and myself with the regional housing strategy, or it's underway now, also with Echo Northwest. But kind of drawing a separation now, we're starting into our uniquely Adams County work. And I don't know if Melissa wants to say a few words kind of about the housing needs assessment timing and what the next steps about.
So you may remember, we received the Strong Communities Planning Grant from DOLA back in April twenty twenty-four. Since then, we have contracted with Echo Northwest and we are kicking off officially with the Housing Needs Assessment. Our first public, public engagement activity will be at Strasburg Hometown Week. So please come out, join us and give feedback, because we want to hear it, we want to hear what the needs are. So that will be on Saturday. Andy is here representing, we've been doing several kickoff meetings. We're working on developing the data, getting public feedback, and then we'll move into the housing, or, excuse me, the Balanced Housing Plan, where we really look at strategies from a land use perspective and possibly funding perspective to help meet the needs within unincorporated Adams County for the Balanced Housing Plan. Is there anything else you want to do?
Yeah, right now, we're building out our engagement plan. So we're already kicking that off and getting underway, trying to take advantage of opportunities to get out and meet folks where they are. So we're, we're working on building that out. We're working with a firm called MIG to help us conduct that work and make sure that we're hearing from folks in a way that wouldn't have been possible at, at the scale for the regional housing needs assessment. Make sure that we're hearing from the community in Adams County. We're taking advantage of different opportunities for that. We're also looking at how we can add to, not duplicate some of the analysis that we've already done through the Dr. Cog work at the regional level, so that we can say some more things about Adams County, different analysis that we can do to build into the housing needs assessment and make sure that we, we can say some things that will help inform what's the choices in front of us for the Balanced Housing Plan itself. So the, the different data that we'd be pulling together for that, that it'll help inform those choices that, that we'll be working through as part of this project as well down the line.
Jenny, what was the plan you refer, the process project you're talking about that you and Peter and Julie are part of?
So the Regional Housing Needs Assessment that you saw today gives to a housing strategy at a regional level.
So are there extra meetings for that, or is that just part of the Dr. Cog meetings? I'm the alternate to Dr. Cog, so I'm just trying to figure out.
Meetings. So I think we're meeting roughly quarterly. I know we meet again in October, I think, for the regional housing strategy.
Can, can you make sure those are also on my, I'm as the alternate to Dr. Cog, because housing is a real passion, that I could, so if they're, I'm assuming they're open meetings, then I could also, so just so.
Two different groups. So, and I forgot, I think you are part of the steering committee, is that the correct title?
Yes.
So I believe that would be the one, if there was an alternate needed, and then they.
It should be an open meeting, isn't it?
It should be, and then the advisory room.
I'm not asking to, you know, Julie's on, that's fine, I just wanted, that's.
It was actually helpful.
Cog handles all of that.
Hear about it, and then somebody picks up, so.
For sure.
I think it's good for the, I have a question. I kind of like, look at it as like, we got this Dr. Cog, and then we got it regional, and then it's almost like just a drill down. And then eventually, we're going to get to the point where we're going to have our housing needs assessment. And it's kind of like a, no kidding, we need housing. We're just going towards this path where we kind of know what the general answer is going to be. But it forces, I think some of it is in a way like a requirement for those who are wanting to put their head in the sand on housing. And, and that's why it was turned into a requirement. But also, I think, when I see this, we'll eventually have a deliverable, and then we're, you know, ours will have a deliverable that's a subset kind of with the Dr. Cog, and then we'll have our balanced needs assessment, right? Like, like a balanced housing assess. What's the term?
Balanced housing plan.
Yeah.
And then we'll drill down even further into the specifics and say we need more duplexes, condos, apartments, that not just deal with the quantitative piece of it, but the qualitative piece of, as far as affordability. And I, and I look forward to having those conversations. But I do think along the way, we kind of have the hood up right now on the DSO, Development Standard Overhaul. And so it would be good for us to say, okay, do we want to open this up and say, do we need to make tweaks to find out? Could we be doing more with ADUs? Do we want to look at cottage houses? Do we want to look at, do we like the idea of saying, overall, we're going to allow more duplexes in a certain area? It almost becomes like a zoning kind of challenge as well, if we have to kind of take a step back. And then in order to get into the detail, we have to take a step higher.
That's precisely the thinking behind it. So the, the housing needs assessment, which is really all that data collection piece, will be concluded roughly, I think you had to get better into that question.
The housing needs assessment piece, I have the calendar up. I think we're looking to wrap up the housing needs assessment piece in November.
So that is still time then for it to refine the DSO, right? Because that stays open for adjustment as we're working through the various modules. So there are some elements of the housing needs assessment that will see result in DSO tweaks.
Yes.
Some of them will fold into the Balanced Housing Plan update, which is obviously housing-focused, more specific than the DSO. That gets into some strategy. And then we will also follow that up with, on your incentive bingo card, you'll notice there's a column there that's about affordable housing, right, so that we can look at, right, the strategy says we need these types of housing, right? This is particularly important. Maybe, maybe the study, the data tells us you really need to focus a lot on duplexes and townhomes in particular areas. We can then create incentives that help encourage that in particular ways.
I like how you put, I like how you put that. We're going to start with our need, start with a plan, and the plan will take us from the need to the strategy, to the tactics, to hopefully the outcomes. And I think that that helps us be able to explain to folks when they're like, oh my God, what do you guys do? I'll study all day. No, 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 let me explain how it's all going to fit together, because we could also, you know, wrap that into some of our discussions on, in systems thinking, you know? Of course, I'm always going to say curb, gutter, sidewalk, also arts, but it all kind of fits together. And when we have more shared amenities, it's more efficient and, and, and a more efficient use of square footage. So I look forward to this, I think you guys are doing a good job on this, and I appreciate it.
I had a quick question about, so the Balanced Housing Plan, is that only for unincorporated Adams County? Or is it looking at an Adams County-wide perspective? Only unincorporated Adams County, okay. So that's helpful, just again, trying to clarify which scope we're looking at. One of the things that I really wanted to ensure that's maybe communicated in our plan. I mean, obviously, when you talk about housing, we're always talking about AMI, right? And to this day, I've heard thousands of presentations and conversations about AMI. And my question is always the same, what does that really mean in dollars for the region? And so really making sure that there's a, a way that we communicate that specifically and putting it in a context that people could understand, I think is helpful. Because when you're talking about fifty percent AMI, my question is, what kind of house is it, are they talking about? Like, what, what can they afford in that range, if any? You know, just like trying to, to put it in like a realistic frame point. So I want to make sure that any plan that we have actually kind of covers that. Of course, we want to be, you know, professional and like everybody else who does AMI. But since this is ours, I'd really love to see that we also incorporate real numbers as we see them today. And another thing is also looking at, I liked Kathy's question on workforce, because I'm curious about what jobs are available in our areas that we're looking at? What is the income that they're making and how does that overlay with the housing? So for example, if it's more of a, you know, lower-paid workforce that we need to really cater to and be able to build more housing for, you know, then what does our zoning practices look like so that we could really encourage that type of housing to be built in the areas that we're talking about? The last thing we want is people to be stuck on two seventy, having to wait hours to try and get to a job in Aurora, you know, when they live, you know, up north here. We're, either way, you know, just trying to think geographically, how are we locally able to meet our needs with the workforce that is, is realistically here? So I don't know if that's going to be part of your process, but I'd love to, to interplay that workforce piece a little bit more. I thought that was a, a great question and excited to see what is in the report.
And he's over here furiously taking notes. So yes, and we know that there will probably be other thoughts that come to you. And I know that Commissioner Pinter also had some particular asks and interests. So that is part of the follow-up that Andy's team will be doing.
Okay.
Is reaching out to the five of you to set up some time, either through email or one-on-one conversation, kind of whatever works best for you, to really get your input on what you're particularly interested in, really hoping that our Balanced Housing Plan addresses. They will collect that so that they can incorporate that into the, the work they're doing with us.
And then I just sent the CHAFA thing real quickly, so you can see the chart. I mean, it's fascinating to recognize that the maximum rent in Adams County for like one hundred percent AMI, okay, we'll just go with one hundred, for two bedrooms is thirty-one fifty.
Oh, yeah.
That's a hundred percent. Now, when you go.
What's the income for a hundred percent? What's?
Let me show you for, okay, so for the income for a hundred percent for one person is ninety-eight thousand dollars. For, let's just say, four people, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And so.
To be at a hundred percent.
Exactly.
Fifty percent and lower.
Fifty percent. And the reason I bring this up is I use this tool a lot when talking to folks that are like, trying to NIMBY in it. They're like, I don't want those people in my neighborhood. And I'm like, timeout, and I'll pull out this chart and I'll say, I want you to look at this. Like, we're literally going to be talking about somebody at fifty percent AMI living by themselves, making forty-nine thousand dollars a year. If they have five people in their house, they have to make seventy-five thousand dollars a year. And their rent maximum for the three-bedroom is going to be eighteen twenty-one. And then I ask, if you're a homeowner, how much are you paying for your mortgage? And some of them are like eleven hundred dollars or like, oh, I'm like, these are people who are going to be spending more on their housing than you are, and you're going to own it. And so I just like to bring up this CHAFA thing. I use this all the time in trying to personalize the importance and the humanized element of this affordable housing issue. Is that when they see this, they're like, oh, wait, so like, these people aren't getting, like, they're not getting it for free and doing no, 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 no. These are folks who are literally trying to make eighty thousand dollars a year for their family of four. Or if there's only three of them, they have to make sixty thousand dollars a year. How many jobs are doing that? And that's putting them, like, and they'll be lucky to get a fifteen hundred dollar a month rent. That's if it's subsidized.
Yes.
But the rest of the world that has to rely on market rate, look at the hundred and tell me how many families are having to spend three thousand dollars a month for rent, and they're making less than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
Well, that's, if you look at the cost-burden slide, again, that's showing where sixty percent of our families in Adams, no, sorry, fifty-seven percent of our families in unincorporated Adams County. fifty seven percent of our families in unincorporated Adams County specifically are severely cost burdened. Okay, making grander work.
I almost have it like on speed dial, I know how to get to a size, so I pull up, like, I need you to look at this and just understand. And almost everyone was like, oh, yeah, so the parent, single parent with two kids or one kid or by themselves, worst part is even these people come out and they're like, they're not going to make fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year by themselves at first. And they're not going to be able to find a subsidized place that's going to allow them to do this fifteen hundred, anyway.
Yeah, anyways.
I didn't want to share that with the team.
No, it's great, so it is a really good tool and it speaks exactly what Commissioner Mago was talking about, trying to like go beyond just percentages of the median income of it, like to actually think about, you know, these these categories and what types of housing kind of fall within this kind of chart that you're just talking about that is, you know, pretty shocking to most folks the first time they look at it.
Yeah.
It's great.
Great, great, so thank you, you will, you will see two different pieces of follow up from us. One, just kind of recapping the regional housing needs assessment data collection and then the outreach to kick off the chart that's uniquely Adams County. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you all very, oh, you want to introduce?
Sure, um, so Chris, we are now, um, moving on to a update in preparation for next week's Airport Coordinating Committee meeting. And Bill Aiken's going to lead this presentation. And then at the end, I was just going to share, um, a summary of, um, the ribbon cutting yesterday at Dunn to open the e-security, um, gates, which opened at three AM this morning. And I attended that event and wanted to share a few highlights with you. And so I passed a bill, um, to brief you on next week's ACC meeting. And there's a few, um, items in preparation for that that we wanted to get your input on. And then, um, then we'll conclude with sort of some Den Adams County coordination updates, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, the, uh, the last two quarterly meetings have been very technical uh, in nature, a lot of historical data, information on parcels and development. This one, in my opinion, is a little bit more strategic on moving forward in alignment with a lot of the municipalities and also Denver and Den. Um, on today's agenda, this clicker, there we go. Um, we're going to talk a little bit about some requests that have come from the City and County of Denver and Den staff that we've had some coordination and communications with some of our municipalities on the appropriate organization or or composition of an organization for the Airtropolis Regional Committee. Uh, a quick update on the Den Strategic Real Estate Development Plan, uh, they received bids yesterday, they extended it. We were hoping to get those back several weeks ago, but they'd extended the bid deadline to yesterday. And we're expecting a more thorough, um, uh, update from the City and County of Denver next Monday. Uh, a little conversation around at the last ACC meeting about Adams County and our municipalities potentially doing a strategic development plan outside of the Denver International Airport. And then some updates on the Archer's Daniel Midland groundbreaking in the Swire Coca-Cola project. Um, so these are the focus areas that were shared with the ACC after, um, after meeting and kind of hearing what the ACC's priorities were. And as we've shared these with the City and County of Denver staff and Denver International Airport and really tried to build out the staff working group with the ACC, a lot of folks had mentioned that items two through six uh, are really the the strategic objectives of the Airtropolis Regional Committee and that those get reported back up to the ACC. So we'll talk a little bit about those in the next couple of slides. So this was shared back in February, it was kind of an understanding between the two organizations, uh, the Airport Coordinating Committee and the Airtropolis Regional Committee. And when you look at the purpose of those based on the IGAs back in nineteen eighty eight and then re amended and restated in twenty sixteen, the Airport Coordinating Committee is really to formulate common positions between and among Adams County and the Adams County municipalities regarding the new airport and the relationship to the airport with those surrounding government entities. And that that board is is essentially the five elected officials from Adams County and then two elected officials from each of our partnering municipalities. Those include Brighton, Aurora, Commerce City, Thornton, and Federal Heights, for a total of fifteen elected officials. We have formed that staff working group, the ACC Staff Working Group, to kind of work on that working plan. And we've attempted over the past two quarters to meet with the staff working group to get development updates and to try to move forward with with the coordination and with the regionalism of developing the Airtropolis around the airport. Um, what I wanted to kind of talk about as part of this presentation and moving forward to the ACC next week is that we do have a group, the Airtropolis Regional Committee, that was formed by way of a of a joint entity IGA back in twenty sixteen, met for the first time in twenty seventeen, created its name and bylaws, and it is essentially a staff group of Denver and Adams County and the municipalities that are supposed to do two things. They promote, uh, they promote and market development opportunities on and around the airport and that they coordinate land use and infrastructure, um, around the airport. And those are really the things that I think the ACC has also been focused on, is more regional coordination between the municipalities and the airport to ensure that we're all playing in the same sandbox and that we're moving forward holistically and in alignment. So again, it's, uh, really this conversation's come out of as, as we've been talking with Denver International Airport staff and City and County of Denver staff, they've been asking for the last several weeks or months to have what they're calling a reboot of the Airtropolis Regional Committee. Uh, this is a group that again was created in twenty sixteen to promote and market the development on around the airport and to coordinate the land use and infrastructure economic development activities around the airport. This group here really serves almost in alignment with the ACC working group in terms of it is staff. This group is intended to be four members appointed by the ACC. Um, so they could be members from Adams County, they could be members from Brighton or Thornton or Aurora or Commerce City. Uh, in conversations that we've had with the municipal staff from those jurisdictions, Thornton and Federal Heights have both said, we're so far removed, we don't need to participate in that, so focus on Brighton, Aurora and Commerce City maybe for representation. Uh, and that Denver City and County has two members that they appoint and then Denver International Airport has two members that they appoint. One of the things to talk about here that that we couldn't find had been done is that there should have been a plan that was created back in the day that gets reported out to the ACC twice per year as part of a, an, a bi-annual report. And that they were supposed to identify, you know, where there would be marketing focus and promotion focus and real estate development focus and coordination and where it would be phased out and how that would be done. Um, so this is basically out of the IGA that was between Denver and Adams County back in twenty sixteen on how this group, the Airtropolis Regional Committee, would report up to the Airport Coordinating Committee bi-annually. Um, we did find that there was a meeting back in twenty seventeen where these were the members that were appointed by the ACC to the Board of Directors for the A R C, and they're designated alternate, uh, alternates. And that what we're going to be asking for, and we we, uh, encourage any discussion today with with the Adams County Board, moving forward to the ACC to update this list with current staff. If you look at this list here and you're familiar with it, a lot of these staff members no longer represent the communities that appointed them. Um, and that Denver is requesting that we get this group up and running again to, uh, to accomplish the stated goals and objectives of this group from back in twenty sixteen. And with that, this might be a good opportunity to kind of stop and have a discussion.
One other thing here before we open the discussion, if you don't mind, is that the original focus of the A R C was really on marketing and economic development. And so the originally appointed members mostly had that, um, as their area of expertise. And so one thing for discussion today and as we move into the ACC meeting next week is that we have the opportunity to have, you know, two people per organization, I think, was sort of the template that was originally created. And so we could have, if needed, one that's focused on economic development, marketing, those types of things, and one that can cover the land use planning and infrastructure, because in many cases, that's not the same person. And so as we move, you know, we're going to continue to be focused on marketing and economic development. But as we move on, a lot of the discussions at the ACC have been around transportation planning and coordinating infrastructure and enhancing transportation options for workforce into the airport, um, connectivity and things like that. We may want to think about, um, having people with complementary skill sets that can be available to the ARC depending upon, um, the need, because what's driving some of the ask from Denver to get the ARC back together is that Denver's beginning some of that and wants to be coordinated on that type of planning. And so. And so, we just put this out there so you knew as of, you know, the last time any individuals were appointed, who they were. And we're open to discussion around how to best meet the needs and intent of the ARC's functions.
I appreciate that. And I think it gives really a level set of expectations of the ACC. Because I think, you know, in the void, people start creating like priorities and pointing fingers of, we're not doing enough. We're not in the right spaces, not doing the right things. So this feels like a bridge to the more technical and strategy portion and then the ACC and what that role is. So I think that that is a good conversation to have of like setting the expectations for the ACC and then bringing this ARC. But I agree with you that we need both. We need planning. And I think we were outside of this slide and what you just shared is that we were a little bit rudderless. And I think that's why the common ground is transportation, the common ground is economic development. And maybe it's, there's more strategy to be had there because it's just not the entrance to the airport. There may be multiple entrances to the airport in our lifetimes of, and what does that development look like? How does it impact surrounding unincorporated Commerce City, Brighton, and Aurora? So yeah, really, thank you, Steve.
I love this, where you guys are going. I think what you're showing is it kind of like, it's exactly, so I'll admit, I've been frustrated in the past because I've, you know, we haven't been doing the bi-annual. We have not been doing some of these other things that some folks were expecting. Looking forward, I love how Lynn put it, it's a level set, it's a baseline that we can now start. I love the fact that we are looking at multiple, multi-disciplinary. And I think that there's, that the ACC can provide vision. And I think that there should be at least an annual meeting with the visionaries of the ACC and the visionaries on the Denver side. And then we have the strategic, which is the folks that'll represent us here in the two disciplines of marketing and land use. I think that's, and then we're gonna still need to fill the void of tactical at some point. And I will kind of renew, though not push real hard, just say, plan to see that at some point we will wanna have a single point of contact entity, person, whatever, that will address and make sure the annual reports are being done, the meetings are being done, that we have somebody still focusing from, you know, filling in this annual appointment of, of representatives. It's a checklist and there's an expectation and that we don't look back after nine, ten years and say, geez, eight years. Maybe we should have wanted to cut it. We have somebody who can do that. And how that will be organized, funded and all that, I'm gonna leave for this next board to figure out. It sounds like, it's honestly gonna probably not happen the next year. If it does, I'm happy to weigh in and support. But however that makes sense, move forward. I love the fact that we're kind of establishing a baseline. We're clarifying our single points of contact, clarifying who our strategic folks are. And I think that this is just, I'm more optimistic after hearing this general direction than I have been on the ACC for the last six to eight years. Thank you.
Yeah, we've been putting a lot of horsepower onto it. And Bill's dug through all the documents and found all the things that we need to do to catch up to twenty twenty-five. So, thank you for all of that feedback and guidance. And I just wanna commend Bill for unearthing all of the things that linger on to-do list, which he's been checking off one at a time.
Great.
The ARC had been meeting, so some of the work that had come out of the ARC recently is the OBOV work, which, which I know the county participated in heavily and there are several municipalities participated in that. But you know, that's really where the conversation on this reboot came up, is Denver reached out and said, we've, we've crossed that off the list. We have other things, when can we get together? And they sent us a list of the folks that worked on the, the OBOV work and, you know, it's twenty staff deep. And so really trying to figure out who are the appropriate designees and alternates to, to start representing the municipalities and the county, moving these, these planning efforts forward.
So, I'm, I'm still trying to get a sense of, so ARC is supposed to be looking at that marketing and economic development piece. So what are the objectives of the ACC?
So, the, the history shows that the ACC was originally formed when the negotiations were occurring back in the eighties when Denver wanted to relocate the airport out of Denver into what used to be Adams County.
Yeah.
And that the ACC was formed to ensure that the cities that were impacted in the county had an opportunity and a forum where they could meet and discuss negotiation points and common interest points during those negotiations between the county and the city. It was restated and re-adopted in twenty sixteen when the amendments to the IGA occurred. And really, when you think about it, this, this is copy and paste out of the IGA. The ACC is, is intended to be fifteen elected officials that get together quarterly to talk about the IGA, compliance with the IGA and any sort of direction that needs to come from an elected official on regulating the IGA or, 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 or common interest points around the IGAs. It does not in any of those IGAs, it doesn't talk anything about the cities and counties coordinating at the staff level on technical and strategic aspects of developing around the airport. When the IGA, when the ACC IGA and the Denver and Adams County IGAs about the airport were re-amended in twenty sixteen, there is a simple statement in there that says that Adams County and Denver agree to form a joint entity to coordinate and promote opportunities around the airport and to coordinate land use and infrastructure coordination. So that, it was the creation of the ARC was this need in twenty sixteen to say, hey, outside of regulating compliance of the IGA, we should have staff members communicating and collaborating on economic development, real estate development, infrastructure planning and land use planning as it impacts on and off airport properties.
Okay. And the reason why I'm, I'm just trying to parse this out is because I thought the ACC was supposed to be in charge of the marketing and economic development piece. So if that's getting taken away back to ARC where it belongs, so then we're just supposed to get, ACC is just to come together and talk about some of these issues? It really just kind of seems redundant to me. Does this structure, is this structure still beneficial for the work we wanna try and accomplish in the region with the ACC being there? I mean, is it just a meeting to have a meeting? Or do we have objectives that we're trying to achieve as an ACC group different than the ARC?
Um, those are the bigger contexts and I, there's probably a lot of history and IGAs involved. But just trying to figure out what the heck we're trying to do with ACC.
Yeah, and I think I might build out a little context, just being the longest-term person involved. I, I think if you think about the ACC was really intended, Adams County Commissioners wanted the airport at the time. And they sold it to their cities and they said, let's all support this and we will make sure you're protected. We will be your advocates. We'll make sure that this IGA with Denver gets enforced, right? The noise provisions, the land use provisions, all of the rest of that, that it, the history is that this committee was formed as a, we'll make sure we're communicating with our cities and we'll take the lead in enforcing, but this was the mechanism that the cities could give feedback and feel like they were protected by the county because we were the party to the IGA, right? The cities technically, even though they're, they're third-party beneficiaries to some components of it. For the most part, these agreements were between Adams County and Denver. We're the party. So really, if you think about the ACC was intended to be how we were gonna ensure our cities were looked after in this process. The reason that the, the marketing and land use component got added to the deal in two thousand sixteen. And the idea was we wanted more collaboration with Denver. So that was really supposed to be Denver and Adams County working together. I think the reason that a lot of the ARC work was coming back to the ACC is because the ACC was paying for it.
Okay.
So, the cities contributed some to the OBOV content, but five hundred thousand dollars of it was paid out of funds that were managed by the Airport Coordinating Committee as a whole. They voted on it, they paid for it. And so I think that's why those meetings kind of turned into like all these marketing updates and focus on that because they paid for it and the committee was supposed to be coming back reporting on what they were doing with the funds. But to your point, I think they are kind of separate efforts, right? I, I think the ACC probably needs to continue in some form because we do continue to still enforce the IGAs. And that piece, we still need coordination on.
If I might, I think it's like, you know how sometimes with our Dr. Cog and then you have the technical staff?
Yeah.
The Dr. Cog and the AdCog are more like the elected officials and then you still have the technical staff doing the strategic. So, so the ACC on the screen would be us doing the vision and strategy where they overlap. And then the next level would be where the strategy and the tactics overlap. You know, if you had to do three circles, like kind of overlapping, that's how I'd recommend us looking at this. Is that the buck really stops with the elected officials, which is why I said a few minutes ago, it wouldn't be bad for us at the ACC level to also interact with whoever's at that higher level in Denver every once in a while.
Yeah.
Like we do at Dr. Cog, while also acknowledging that we're delegating some of our, you know, work to the joint ARC. And so if you had to like do a thing, you got ACC, half of ARC's us. Denver, BIA, whatever the heck their, you know, behemoth of three different Denvers might be, somewhere up here contributes their half to the ARC. I, I, I think that's where we look at it, but the ultimate goal, I would think like if we had a standing agenda for ACC would be, give us an update on compliance, marketing and land use. And, and as long as those balls aren't dropped, we're getting, the problem is that we've been fairly stagnant on our end. And that if you go look at what Denver is and have done, they just haven't waited for us. They're like, great, we're gonna do the ARC, do the OBOV, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then they've just taken off. And they're, am I wrong?
Well, they have wanted us to get the ARC back together in order to participate in some of the planning that they're about to take off. And we, we wanted to get this input and update the ARC. So we've asked them to just wait a little bit to convene the ARC again so that we can make sure that the right people are named, but.
I, I say that in all respect is that when talking to the folks at Denver, when we're like, hey, what are you guys doing without us? The answer is, we've been waiting for you to keep up and catch up and do participate, just like you just, you literally just acknowledge. But one example would be if they're gonna put non-airport-related stuff into creating a Native American, you know, like visitor center that, that just was announced, that'd be kind of a cool thing to do with them, recognizing that it may be in the Denver, within the fence or within what's owned by Denver, but if it's within the fence and it's part of that fifteen hundred acres, then we do have some skin in the game, you know? But it's just, that's kind of, these are the types of collaborations I could see being really cool for us to be engaged with. So that's just for historical, like.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So that's why I'm so excited to see us finally getting to like a new baseline.
Yes. You know, and it's all, it's under Kim Day's leadership at the airport. It has always been a strained relationship between Kim Day and the whole state of Colorado. Like, you know, definitely this committee for sure and our relationship with them. So I think the board can continue to do outside of this, that we should have our own independent relationship with the folks at Denver. Yeah, let's just be in a good neighbor. But I really like the suggestions that you made, Steve, of what the ACC updates are. Of like, what is the movement as far as all the things that you listed? And then really think about, you know, who should be on the ARC? I mean, and what does that work look like? And we have a really good rapport with Den right now and they are really eager. And it was, not that they took off without us, you know, after talking with Barry Birch, that a hundred million passengers was not planned for a while. So it has just been demand placed on the airport. That they just had to start planning to keep up with demand and to keep up, keep that going rather because it was growing exponentially over their timelines when they thought it would be fully implemented. So.
Yep, in some way, Kim Day, they, they can't wait for us.
So are we talking today about designees to ARC? We would like to. Okay, can we go back to that slide, see who's on there, please? Thank you so much.
You only showed the old ones, right? Now you haven't shown the next ones.
Well, I, but I have a question because, okay, so looking at this, under the Board of Directors, I know this is old. But is the understanding, were these people, Barry Gore, Wendy Mitchell, Mike Martinez, Brian DeGruy, are they employees of these jurisdictions?
It's a blend.
Yeah.
Because the original focus was economic development. At the time, we didn't really have a robust economic development function in the county. And ACED performed that on our behalf. And so.
Because, yeah, because Wendy Mitchell is AED, which is not, which is not a city entity.
Made that determination. So Aurora at the time determined that they wanted to use Aurora Economic Development in that function.
So would this be a, a place where we might use our relationship with AC rep?
Absolutely.
Has a possibility to, on ARC since that, since that is, you know, seems comparable with what Aurora is doing?
Yeah, and we, that, our recommendation is pretty broad down here, but we recommend that we use both seats to cover the full span of ARC functions, including economic development, land use planning and infrastructure. So we'd recommend that we have one staff member that can cover the land use planning, infrastructure coordination with Den and then one staff member that can cover marketing and economic development related to the Airtropolis. I will just say that it, even if we name two people, we can still have others support those two people and coordinate with those two people. But we need to know who sort of then responsible for attending the ARC meetings and bringing information back to all of us, so.
So is the idea to open this up to other organizations? All the organizations or you wanna keep these four organizations, Adams, Aurora, Brighton and Commerce City?
Bill had discussions leading up to today with all of the ACC staff members. And you heard him make mention of this before, but Thornton and Federal Heights are willing to defer because we only have four spots. So they're willing to defer because of the adjacency of Brighton, Commerce City and Aurora. So we think that still these four are probably the right ones to identify representatives. And I, I think Bill's done a good job of confirming that that is acceptable.
Can, can we, could we, sorry about standing. I mean, Thornton is the largest city contained inside Adams County. I would like them to reconsider their participation in this. I live in South Thornton. I take three streets to get to the airport. I take ninety-sixth, Tower and Pena. I am not that far away from the airport and I live inside the city limits of the city of Thornton. And I know a lot of people who do, who are not that far away. I would like them to re, I would, and I will talk, I can contact some folks there myself. But I think that there's something to be, I, I don't know. I, I, that, that's my take, that's my gut reaction right now.
Yeah. Steve and then Julie.
I, I totally see why you would say that. But I think the focus here is like if you actually drew the line around the Airtropolis, which includes Thornton and everything, don't get me wrong, and the ACC. What we're looking at is, is there anything that Thornton would do in marketing or that Thornton would do in land use that would directly impact this? While I still think though, that doesn't mean even if they're not on this board representing us at the ARC, they're still represented at the ACC. They're also gonna be represented at AdCog. And I could see us with the Dr. Cog, AdCog, Regional Transportation Communication that if there's something that, that like you're saying, the roads and such, like I think a hundred fourth, a hundred twentieth. These are like some key roads that will impact everyone on, like a hundred twentieth, we've all agreed in the past that it's gonna be a major thoroughfare if we can get it there, you know, freeway, whatever we might call it. Eventually someday, that will connect Thornton, Northland, Brumfield, everyone over to the airport. So I think like there's still ways to do it, but I agree with like, I understand what you're saying. But I think as long as we're saying we're not excluding the interests of anyone in the ACC and this is more of the tactical instead of the strategic, hopefully we can still meet the needs of Thornton in the strategic so we could look at it.
But I, what I will, what I will concede is that since the ARC has not been, I've been, because I've been on the ACC since I got on council in twenty twenty, late, very late, twenty twenty-one, ARC's never reported to, so never reported to ACC. So I didn't, so that, you're right. So if that is going to start happening again, that is a different situation than what my previous experience was as a council member. So I can see what you're saying. And true, land use department may not, their decisions may not be.
Intuitively, I would say we.
Marketing, but they're part of the greater region, so.
Yeah, intuitively, I would say, like, put in Kristen Sullivan and Tricia Huff, supported by Bill for now.
Lisa Huff?
Lisa Huff, what did I say?
Tricia Huff.
You were looking at the screen.
Like, and then, and then supported by Bill and then eventually when Bill leaves our, our, our organization starts a new one called the ACC. Metro District or whatever, whatever he calls it.
Spin-off organization.
Whenever he, whenever Bill like.
He's not leaving.
He has both types of jobs.
Wasn't a suggestion.
I think a combination of.
Like I just think like.
An AC rep on our first line would be great and. An A C rep on our first line would be great and um, you can determine if you want it to be me or Bill. Um, that covers the, the county portion of it and, you know. We'll work well with A C rep for sure on um, coordinating which meetings one or the other should attend, so. I think you'd have good coverage if you had a combination of both organizations listed here.
And then, so just to kind of clarify, so we have the organizations that we're kind of sticking with at this point. Um, but if they're, for, for the two seats, we're asking for somebody who does land use and then somebody who does economic development for each option, okay?
And some of us do both, to be honest, both Bill and I do economic develop, have economic development backgrounds too. But um, I think that would provide you the widest variety of coverage if you had both organizations listed. Uh, and it's a transition from it being exclusively A C E D in twenty seventeen to being a hybrid approach, which is more. Representative of where we are today.
Cool. So that's, when we meet with the ACC and we ask for this, it is implied, it is. It is implied and I'd like to keep it um, not elected officials, that this is actual staff.
Yeah, that would, we would also make that same recommendation.
Good, yes, good flag, thank you.
I mean, the ACC meetings themselves are quite a lot um, to cover with your busy schedules, so. Um, this group needs to go attend all these meetings with Denver and things like that. We'll just make sure we're reporting back. Um, and so you know what's going on, all the activities.
Strategic vision, strategic tactical.
Ad Cog, Dr. Cog model is, is what we're thinking too. You have technical staff that support you. So that when there's governance related decisions, you have the right people who've been attending the meetings all along to support you. And so I guess um, there's just one decision to make, which is which of the two of us do you want to have actually named there? Um, Bill's doing all the work. I think you'd be in good, in a good place if you named Bill. Uh, but I will stay involved, stay connected, cause I think that's been a good combination.
Just cause I'm trying to, and there's certain of these strategic relationships that we're just wanting to make sure there's the highest. Yeah. Level possible of executive presence and it has nothing to do with Bill, like I, I just know that. And in fact, I already said, I think it'd be great to be the leader of an organization that might someday happen again there. I don't know, I'll defer to it.
I tend to agree with that, I.
Change it later. If we do this once a year, let's revisit this.
Bill's support, um, even though Kristen's name is on the, the line, I do think that we expect Bill to support. Cause it's just the logistics that you're mentioning, but I, I agree with that.
That was one of the considerations that I recall in twenty seventeen was making sure it was like city manager, at least department director named. But others would um, support and attend some meetings, but um, I think that was to try to give it that degree of executive support. So that's fine. Um, I think we'll just need to have that understanding that um, we'll both go to meetings, but you know, make sure that one of the two of us is always at the meetings.
I would love to see Michael Martinez stay.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, with his economic background, and I know that's not our decision, but. He's really well-rounded.
Marv, Marv is in. Very eager.
The two of them, again, that's a nice combination, right?
I mean, if, here's, here's.
Use in economic development.
Here's the deal. I feel like we're totally comfortable with what we talked about with our row on this graph.
Yeah.
The next question is, is how much influence do we even have on the other rows? But what we can say in the Aurora is it makes sense that if they choose an E D C person like Wendy, they should fill the other one though with a land use person in Aurora. Makes sense. On, on all of these, that somebody has, either that the executive goes backups of Michael and Mark. Are still responsible for both marketing and land use within their organization, so if they choose that, makes sense. But we can give a friendly nudge to everyone that we're really trying to make sure that both functions are covered. Both expertise and specialties are covered, and I would appreciate where you're going with that too, but I just don't know. Unless we are saying that it's the ACC decision, and I'm not hearing that.
I think it's individual organizations. Um, that's how I think we're approaching it, is that each organization should identify the two. Um, representatives that cover the full functions and purpose of the A R C. And Bill and I can circle back with the others. Um, you know, I'd say particularly Commerce City and Aurora. Because they really, you know, Commerce City's two staff members listed don't work there anymore. So we'll circle back and close the loop on this so that they can have some time between now and next week to have internal discussions if needed. And it may be possible that some don't have the second seat identified at next month's meeting, but as long as we have one person, we can. Get back to a meeting as a A R C.
We also clarified right now, uh, that the expectation is that the Adams County representation here incorporates not just on corporate. But the entire counties, especially looking out for the other stakeholders like Thornton and those who are not gonna be at the table here, so. Like, so if there is an issue Kathy, like, or, you know, somebody from North Gun or Thornton or Federal Heights says, hey, we're not getting our due. Like represented here, then the, the bucket up, the bucket up with us. And so we can make that expectation right now, and to Lisa Huff, that this is not just, this is about Adams County, which includes the stakeholders. Knowing that these other three will have somebody actually in the room, we're all gonna be in the room for ACC. But also in those moments where the ACC is not the one doing this, there's an expectation that if our staff is gonna look out for the Thornton, North Gun and those who are not in the room. Is that fair?
Yes, having talked this through, I, I, I totally uh, support that, thanks.
That, I think that has been our mindset, that we have kind of a, a more regional role than just. Um, you know, it's more than the equivalent to one of the city's roles when it comes to the A R C, because we're looking at the entirety of the county.
Yes.
Okay, are there any more slides?
Couple.
Yes, there are.
Oh, we actually have the stuff I'm worried about. Fast without us.
It's such a happy place.
This is happy.
These slides, stop.
If you're aware, um, Denver International Airport is, is currently in the process of selecting a consultant to update their strategic. Uh, develop real estate development plan. It was originally uh, done about eight, nine years ago. Um, one of the things that staff has conveyed to our team is that this plan, while it had pretty pictures and graphics. It did not talk at all about the infrastructure or uh, the development of utilities and other coordination. That needs to happen on and off the airport to be successful. So this plan is really just trying to kind of spell out those costs and those improvements in a phasing that works for development for the airport. Uh, we are hoping to have a more robust um, update today, but they have extended the bid deadline. It was, it closed yesterday. And they're planning on providing us with a summary on the eleventh, so next Monday. So we should have something more detailed to share with the ACC board, but as of right now, uh, nothing's been shared with our staff. As a result of what they've received or what those bids came in at. What I will share with you is that when we asked, what do you anticipate the cost to be, they've budgeted five hundred thousand dollars for this plan. Because of the level of expertise that will go into it, that will have a phasing approach on what infrastructure, what utilities and what coordination must be done. To make development at the airport successful. And we'll share kind of a, um, a story at the end of this presentation. On why that's so important and why that, it hasn't been done for the airport and um, they just lost out on a big deal as a result of that.
What, you, what has, do you mean their, because their plan wasn't done, they lost out on?
Just because they didn't understand what sort of coordination and infrastructure utilities are necessary for the type of development they want. And that this plan that they have published doesn't even start to scratch the surface on those topics. Um, so they wanted to take it from a concept to an actual plan.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Um, there was at the last meeting, this very robust discussion on the visioning study.
Yeah.
That the ACC did uh, with, in collaboration with C dot in Denver back in twenty sixteen. The intent of this one was simply to be a visioning study on what the Colorado Eritreopolis could be. It did identify a list of transportation projects with some twenty sixteen cost estimates. Um, again, as part of the ACC working group, we've been coordinating and reaching out to those municipalities to try to get some updates. And what we found is that a lot of those projects are either no longer being pursued or they've been amended greatly. And unfortunately, there just was not enough uh, momentum behind getting these updates done before the ACC. But one of the things certainly to talk about is Denver is budgeting five hundred thousand dollars for their project. If the ACC wanted to do a similar type of strategic real estate development plan. I would assume a similar or higher cost for the portions, cause we have a much larger area, more coordination. Um, there's no budget for that right now, so when we move forward into that, and we can certainly remove this slide for the ACC presentation. Cause we are hoping to have more information and more collaboration from the municipalities. Um, that did not transpire for the Q three meeting, but we could certainly remove this slide and bring it back for the Q four meeting. Just didn't want the ACC to think that staff didn't hear that, that robust discussion on transportation coordination. And a plan for us to do our own strategic real estate development um, plan. So any feedback on that one, we'd, we'd love to hear on whether to keep this slide or remove it, knowing that we didn't quite get the responses that we were hoping on to move forward.
So I guess my question, um, for those who have been around longer than me, is why would we not. Pursue our own strategic real estate development plan for the ACC?
Um, sometimes it's been a little competitive amongst the partners. Um, landing some of the development activity around the airport. So there has been coordination around infrastructure, but I'd say it's harder, it's a lot harder for us and it's for Denver. Denver's a single entity with a single focus and we are in slightly different positions, each of the jurisdictions that's trying to attract some of this development. We have worked well together. The marketing was a place where we could really all get, you know, behind and there's a lot of shared. Values around the marketing. The land use gets a lot harder to work together and our comprehensive plans have served in that function. Um, so I would say it's not as if we don't have plans, we have transportation plans that have been adopted, we have comprehensive plans. The countywide comprehensive plan covers the entirety of the area um, in the Eritreopolis. And so that's been really kind of serving in that function. This twenty sixteen study, I participated in heavily. Um, it was um, actually the contract management function was performed by C dot. Because it was more perceived as the neutral party, because we didn't really have enough trust to say. Denver could be the contract manager over the consultant. And so I would say that there was a lot of progress made here in this study. And I think turning back to it and revisiting it and refreshing it, we would probably be able to all get behind. But when it comes to funding key elements of infrastructure, which then lead to kind of growth opportunities. That's where it gets a little more difficult when you've got five plus jurisdictions trying to work towards a common goal.
Okay.
I think, I think the question and I think the answer were really, um, good things to address. I, I will look at it that I think from what I hear from Kristen just now, and I, based on my time when I was here is. That the question was, given the fact that we don't, that we wanna protect independence of each member. Maybe we don't need a plan, but in reality, the more I see the competitiveness and we've given it a shot for eight, nine years. I think the plan might be even more important now, even if it's simply to translate the individual plans. Comp plans, all of which have been updated across the board, and figure out how to do transition. Translation and smooth transitions among those borders. And I think it might also open it up where we, it's an and or where we ask if we can be a participant in the Denver one somehow. And we create our own, and I think that gives us three things. Number one, it helps us tear down the walls of, of, uh, the, within our own organ, uh, within our own team, right? The territorialism that might exist between like Aurora versus Brighton versus Commerce City, right? By having a plan, because we've come together and we said this is what, how we're gonna, almost like, this is how we're gonna play together. Knowing that we might need to make some tweaks and say, oh, you're gonna have I one here and we're gonna have housing, we gotta figure out how to make that not incompatible. So number one, it helps us with our own coll, internal collaboration with our cities. Number two, I think it also allows us that to not have to be so dependent outside of the fence of D I A. On D I A, and meaning like we have our own plan and say, so we don't get to a situation where everything that we're doing is dependent on the big brother. Haggling us along. And then third, I think, which is important also, it gives us the ability to say, to Denver. Let us help you and you help us on these joint needs that we've identified on our respective plans. On pipe, power, ping, pavement, all those things. And what I mean by that is like roads, water, electrical. And as we continue to, so those are the three things, internal collaboration. Independence as, and now ACC, and then also more interdependence and collaboration with them. Like, because it would be great for us as we do this to identify, maybe we can have an east, a north and a, and maybe even a west entrance. Because we bring something to the table like water or electrical. Um, and it might be where we're. Really rough in twenty fifteen when we were arguing, cause I was asking if there's a way for us to do infrastructure to plug and play. What I meant by that is like, if there was a situation, I don't think anyone was in there, maybe other than Heidi. We got in a real argument with everyone in the room, like. We should be able to say to Denver, hey, can we plug into your electrical or you wanna use some of our waters, we come up from the east or something? I think it opens up collaboration, so internal collaboration, independence from Denver, but also potential for a collaboration with them.
And you're talking.
Particularly infrastructure. That's one of the benefits of why I think we should do our own plan, but also stay connected with Denver.
And who's the we when you say we do our own plan? ACC.
ACC.
ACC, okay, thank you. I, I thought so, but.
But there's gonna be a cost and the question is, are we willing to take on that cost for the sake of regional?
So I think, excuse me, Bill's. Question was leave the slide in or do we take it out and bring it back? And I think it's still a report out to the ACC of like. This study was complete, you know, this study was done, we have since gone back to all your municipality, municipalities. Um, and the, those projects or roadways that were identified. Have all moved on. Your municipalities have moved on for whatever reason, addressing current needs at the time or. But, you know, bigger corridors, whatever the case may be in transportation. I agree that, I don't know what a real estate development plan would look like, because Kristen is right. That the entities are very highly competitive. And I think one possibility of diffusing that is bring Den in. And let Den show their cards to all the municipalities, so the municipalities have an idea. Of the potential of Denver International Airport, because I think they're not looking big enough. And I, when I say that, Aurora is, I think the one poised most highly to. Take advantage of opportunity is Aurora. Um, Brighton is a little bit further out. When you look at the bullseye being Denver, Brighton's a little bit further out on that next tier. Um, but there's been some leadership challenges, elected and administrative um, in Commerce City. And I think that they will just say, if it's a hotel, it's a restaurant, it's another parking structure, you know, whatever it will be, they'll just. Grab the logist hanging fruit, rather than really invest in what does long-term look like on Tower Road. Is it logistics? Is it, you know, is it a Costco? Is it something that, a, a major economic development driver as people leave the airport? On Pena Boulevard that they veer off and they do shopping or they do whatever and then they continue on. And I don't think our cities have been, we've, we've gone through a lot in the last ten years. And I think COVID was a major upset of a lot of things and then now as we come out. I really would like to see, we can do our economic development land planning. I think the common denominator between all the, the partners um, is transportation. I think that that's common ground. I think economic development, you know, all of us should not pursue building a Costco in the same area. I mean, like, what is their, what is their plan and vision? And I think even communicating that out, if it's administrator administrator. Or the A R C people do it, because it does get competitive. Um, but I think that there's value still in reporting this out and having our cities really refocus on. What the potential is, because I don't think they're seeing potential. I think that there's, we've, we've all are elected officials. Um, you don't know what motivates elected officials to run. Is it because I'm fighting a mill levy? I'm fighting a master plan development residential from ten years ago and I'm so busy fighting the past that I'm not looking forward. And I think that's doing a disservice, so we have to look forward. And I think refocusing our municipality leadership. Um, elected and administrative and our planning people um, makes a lot of sense. And I think Denver really showing their cards, because they're doing it at other places. They're gonna go to Longmont if they haven't already and do. Um, they're past their one hundred million passenger plan, they're under the twenty forty-five plan. Um, and I think. We should listen to them, what their plans are, and then we all can either coordinate together or we. I'm also okay going it alone for Adams County on our portions of the land that touches them, of how do we, how do we do that? Julie? Um, I, yeah, I see where you're coming from. I, I would like to keep this slide in, really because I want to have the conversation with our members. Um, to get a feel of where others are at. I understand it's competitive, right? Everybody wants to own their own turf.
I understand it's competitive, right? Everybody wants to own their own turf, but if we can't figure out how to move forward together. We're not gonna be able to ever compete with the work that Denver's trying to do and without. A focus, without a vision, without projects that we'd like to see, like, then what are we doing? Meeting once a quarter just to meet, like, I mean, like, we have to have. Some type of direction we're trying to move and yes, it's gonna be difficult with different jurisdictions. For all of the reasons you just outlined, all of them, um, but without a plan. I, I'm, I'm failing to see the purpose and direction of the group. Um, and how do we continue to move? Forward or do we just stay in current state spinning our wheels and chasing dead? I don't know. I, I, I don't really like that card either.
Well, I mean, there's. Of the jurisdictions. Really right adjacent to Den. Commerce City, us. So. May, yeah, I, I don't know. Do we, uh, do we try to do a, a multi jurisdiction plan or do we as Adams County? Say we're doing a, our, a, a plan, you know, or do we? Lead the way and say, this is what we're, we are gonna do this, a plan for our land and then we can, and then. And then we, as the pieces come in, we see how to best collaborate on, I, I don't, I don't know. I don't know if the, if the cities are, you know, what they're gonna say, we'll have to have a conversation about that. Um, whether they wanna be part of a multi jurisdictional plan or not, but if, if not, if not, then we, then we need to put, put our foot on the gas.
Yeah, I think Bill and I both believe updating this twenty fifteen plan to make it more current is a good way forward. What we've heard from our city partners is that they need consultant support to do that and so I think it's a budgetary conversation. Because there was a lot of, um, good work done here. It's just that something like this needs constant. Refreshing and at ten years in, you definitely need a big refresh and so I think it's a great conversation to have that. You know, how do we prioritize this and get the resources together as a group to continue to advance? The land use and infrastructure planning around the airport and I will just say, you know, in a pro Adams County way. Um, that I know it feels like Denver has really run ahead. They've had. Very little development activity, very little development activity despite all of the efforts they've put forward. So a lot of. Beautiful renderings and almost no development activity and in fact in a slide coming. You're gonna hear about a big announcement that they made where the developer partner has now pulled out. And so that while it has looked very exciting, the on airport development has not occurred at all. Um, and so, and we've just been booming with development activity, particularly in Aurora, um, so. So I, I know it does feel like they're racing ahead of us and our efforts could always be better coordinated and we could definitely become more and more strategic. As a region, but we have experienced massive growth on the outside of the airport and they have not experienced. Massive real estate development inside the airport boundary. Um, and we benefit when they do and we have the revenue sharing agreement, so it is something we continue to support and we're not trying to. Thwart any of their development by any means. We think it's great for everyone to continue to boost the success of Denver International Airport. But it just has not, they haven't seen the results of that investment that they've put in yet and I know it's a long term plan, so they will. Uh, but it's hard to develop on airport property for so many reasons, so. So I just wanna say Adams County has done very well to entice development in the Oritropolis and we've just seen massive amounts of infrastructure investment. And private investment, so. Did we continue? Do you want us to continue?
Just think that. You know, to squander this opportunity because we do and I do share with folks that we surround. Denver International Airport, so as they fly in, whether it's developer, resident visitor. Um, like, well, where's Adams County? And I was like, well, if you fly into Denver National Airport, we completely surround them, where Penya Boulevard. Really is the only public access point for now. Um, so. You know, that ninety-nine point five percent that we surround them, I think that that is a good conversation to have and. Kinda leads back to our strategic plan with Dion on Friday is that. You know, through budget, through, um, the social nets, HSE, HR one. Is that we still have to be diligent and work through economic development. And really be poised for that next big thing and that could be transportation, I twenty-five, it looks like C dot. Has bumped that up a little bit, so really be nimble as an organization to lean in when the opportunity strikes. And I think that building ourselves a runway with our partners, um, to tackle Den and the activity. Economic development opportunity would be a great thing, but yeah.
And just one more note on that one is really the, the, the plan that Den is creating, the strategic real estate development plan. Is just a launching point for them. It's, it's gonna identify a phased approach to where investment needs to occur for infrastructure utilities. Which has been a huge hindrance and obstacle for them to have to overcome to convince developers to come and develop an area. And oh, by the way, once, once you get here, you'll have to solve for utilities and infrastructure to get to the site. Um, and developers have walked as a result of that. Um, the two updates that we're gonna provide to the ACC, we'll give an update on the ADM groundbreaking that occurred a couple months ago. A Fortune fifty company at Rocky Mountain Rail Park, a very successful, uh, company that, that was. Uh, attracted to Adams County that is currently under construction and they still hope to be open. Or have the building ready to be open in the upcoming months as a very quick project. Um, and then one that's not so great news is, I don't know if you guys saw the news on July sixteenth. Swire Coca-Cola has pulled out. Um, we did have some conversations with the Den team, it's very clear in the, the, the. Publication that was made is that they're no longer pursuing this location, they're seeking a different location. Um, one of the things is we've talked to Den as to why, you know, we asked questions, is this a, is this a negotiating tactic? They said, no, they've, they've terminated the lease, they've walked. And we asked why and they said, well, you know, they leased the site over two years ago and they're still having trouble identifying utilities and infrastructure to the site. Um, so that's, you know, as a staff from Den, they've, they've said. This is why we're so looking forward to the updating of this development plan that will actually identify where. We as a city and county need to invest in infrastructure utilities to make these greenfields around the airport actual development parcels. Um, so that is something that they're pursuing, it's something that I know that we've looked into as a county around the Casp area. It's something that we just need to be focused on moving forward because a lot of the land that you drive by, you think. Gosh, these are great sites and they're convenient and they're located near the airport, um, you know, utilities, water, sewer. Our infrastructure, roadways to get there, very challenging and very limited in this area. Um, so certainly planning around that is something that's, this, uh, that Denver's really, really focused on. Um, and just as a reminder, these are those sites that, that they did lease, um, that they've now terminated those leases on. Just north of Penya, just east of Tower Road, uh, just outside of Commerce City.
And you'll recall at our last ACC meeting, we shared the, we received the notice, the official notice under the IGA. For these parcels that they were identifying these as part of their fifteen hundred acres. Um, I assume that they'll still be pursuing this and this will still remain in their fifteen hundred acres, but. We don't expect any development activity real soon.
Um, and then we had reached out to a lot of the cities. I know that there is a request to have a more formal development update template. Uh, we did hear back from some municipalities, not all of them. Um, so we're working on that for Q four to try to have a more unified approach to making sure that we're getting these updates. Uh, ahead of time to report out to the entire ACC and not just passing a microphone around the room. Um, which will be required to do at the, at the meeting next week just because we didn't hear back from, uh, but two of the, of the jurisdictions. And that is the presentation for next week.
Great name, if this is our, you will recommend naming me and Lisa Huff as our two ARC. With Bill, um, supporting on the ladies. The ARC functions for Adams County. Okay, great. That's all we have today.
No, I'm just stretching. Nope, I'm not stretching.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all for having the public works team up today to talk about the C I P five year plan. My name is Brian Staley. I'm public works director, joined by Janet Langquist, our deputy director and Renee Valdez, our C I P program manager. Today we're presenting the outline of a five year plan for our capital program and a framework priorities and funding strategy that we've developed for your feedback. And input in the budgeting process for the 2026 budgeting cycle. I will stress that what you're about to see is a framework and a proposal. Nothing here is set in stone and we are really enthusiastic about the fact that you are participants in this process and helping us to create what is to become our C I P five year plan. And this is a step in the right direction of formalizing the way that we build out our five year cycles. Each year in Adams County in a way that moves beyond public works leadership, making a recommendation to the county manager, county manager, including it in the larger package of the county's budget for the next year and the board just signing off. So this is the first time or the I guess more robust way for us to put process and a data driven effort behind the projects that we are advancing in our program. So
And Brian, can I have it?
My teaser, please.
No, I appreciate Brian and Tina for talking about today and we've had a lot of conversations over the past months about the process, the methodology for prioritizing projects, for tracking project delivery, for making sure that we are effectively managing our portfolio. You all know that this effort has gone on for a couple of years now to really implement better practices managing our portfolio and also using our limited resources every year to determine which projects really need to be moved forward, but also what we have resources available for and that are realistic and feasible, but also understanding there is a lot of unmet need in the community. There's a lot of demand in the community for all of these projects. And we really want to work together on building out what this framework looks like going forward. As Brian mentioned, this is our first real effort to kind of codify the process for prioritizing projects. So rather than public works, we're keeping track of various priorities that come in from all kinds of sources, from commissioners, from the community and that kind of thing. Keeping their own internal running list that we are actually looking together at a framework for being able to score projects to prioritize and rank them. But also that we have your lens captured into what those rankings look like and also just transparency about where projects are because funding absolutely plays a role. There's infrastructure kind of challenges that play a role. It doesn't mean that a project can't be prioritized differently or elevated for the public work team need to have an understanding of operationally what that looks like if we are thinking, you know, one project over another needs to be elevated or moved in the list and that they are able to have clear direction and come back with what actually that that plan would look like. So that's the conversation that we're hoping to have today and really get your, not only your, your reaction to the proposed framework, but also helping us refine that lens that we're trying to use going forward. This is an ongoing process. This is, this is our first big stab at it, but this is going to continue as we use this more. And then the piece that's also really critical is communication and how we talk about projects, not only where we've been, but going forward. Once we have this approved process and list, how are we talking with all the impacted communities about what that means to be in a different phase in the list and what progress looks like and working together on building out that communication strategy every year as we visit this. These are long-term projects. So we say today, five years from now, probably we'll have some adjustments. But you know, what is that going to look like for us every year to bring that back and talk about what those adjustments are or what has changed? We do have a map here because we wanted you to be able to actually look at the outlay of where all of these projects are. We have the list, the current list of rankings, but as Brian mentioned, this is not the final list. This is just the starting point and C I P committee has done a lot of work to sort of get us to this point with their lens and now we want to appropriate your feedback and you know, we had envisioned we need to get up and walk around and take a look at the map. We can, if we need to, you know, stand up and kind of collaborate. We absolutely are willing and open to do that because we really want to make sure that it's making sense. So I will hand it back to Brian and we can dig in and we'll answer your question as we go.
Yes, and we envisioned today originally in a, another room where we would sit around a table together and mark up the roll plots, roll up our sleeves. It's a working session, so please stop me at any point to interject. I don't want this to be me talking at you. I want it to be a conversation about what are your priorities and how can we make this C I P program? Or capital improvement program reflect your vision for the future. So we talked a bit about what we're trying to accomplish today. We have a framework for the plan in place that we'd like to get your reaction to. We have a funding strategy presented in the larger document in the support materials for today's session. And then the way and the methodology that we put behind the prioritization process. But again, all recommendations and awaiting your input and, and the actions, I guess, for does this match what your expectations would be and what additional inputs? Like Commissioner Malika's initial reactions yesterday, maybe project longevity or how long a project has existed in our list should have some bearing on its priority ranking in the process. So as you all know, transportation and mobility infrastructure need only grows, it never shrinks. We have identified 29 projects in our program that amount to about 320 million plus in infrastructure investment needs and our available spending is about five to 15 million dollars annually. That's what's left over after our operational, our annual operational spend in income. Conservatively, Mark Cluth, who may has not joined us, Ellie certainly behind me from Budget and Finance will say more like five million, at least for the near future, so that we are being conservative and responsible and making sure that we're not getting over our skis or, or ahead of ourselves in, in our spending.
So what comprises this capital fund?
So this is from Roden Bridge Funding. Primary inputs are, are Roden Bridge Sales Tax. Special allocation from property taxes, input from H U T F. What am I forgetting in the list?
So it's, it's the Roden Bridge Sales Tax and then Roden Bridge Property Tax, also that's in.
A portion of property taxes are input.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, yeah, okay, so.
And then H U T F is like the, the fuel sales tax at the state level that's allocated to counties and cities from the state, but it's ours to do with as we please.
But is that the, that's not the shareback we were talking, that's not what we were talking about last week. That's I think H U T F is different from the.
H U T F is the, the highway use.
Highway users tax fund. Highway users tax fund. That's different than the fuels.
Impact and price sets a new enterprise to stay to follow up.
Just, just making sure that I'm up to snuff. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Also traffic impact fees?
Yes, traffic impact fees.
Get the words.
And maybe smallest bucket, that's
So traffic impact fees, those are what developers pay when they develop?
Yeah, developers, oil and gas, anytime, anytime a fee is collected by Jenny's team at the, at the one stop fee permit center.
Okay, and do traffic impact fees that are collected, do those go back to the areas? Or do they go back to projects where those areas occurred? Like, so like if the developer is developing off of whatever intersection, does it go back to that region or can it be, do we really just throw it in a big old pot?
Yeah.
Like.
Yeah, it, it actually gets thrown into a bigger pot, the way that those are set up. There, we have a traffic impact fee for the western area, which is from Schumacher, which is just a little bit east of Casp
Yeah.
to the west and then the, from Schumacher all the way to the east that we have east and west component and it gets thrown into a big pot based on projected regional improvements in that region.
Okay, so if a community feels like they're being, like there's a lot of development in a particular community, that money isn't necessarily coming back to them.
Yeah, it, it would not be very specific to that specific community, it'd be to the region.
Okay, to the region, alright.
And then the fee is based on the whole region, the needs of the whole region.
Yeah, and there, there's an analysis done that I think is going to be coming that actually will be identifying the western region and the eastern region potential needs kind of component of it.
Oh, okay.
So.
A super fun study that John Saul and Jenny's team is working on. Nice.
But let's let's also clarify, because I think we're on a good topic here, that cash in lieu of is different than the traffic impact. So while the traffic impact fee, the traffic impact fee goes into this larger regional pot. And the view is from the larger regional impact, whereas the cash in lieu of allows like a developer to give a hundred thousand dollars to a more localized pot that theoretically should go back into that project when the time comes. Yeah, when the time comes. And and the rub is always when somebody donates a hundred thousand dollars and then a few years later, it's like then the county has to build a four hundred thousand dollar. But at least we got something instead of nothing, but and then there's sometimes we never build it. And then that money is just like goes somewhere else three or four blocks away. And so that's usually the rub I get from folks in the community that hate cash in lieu of. I'm one of those folks in the past that has never really enjoyed cash in lieu of because I've seen it so often in these neighborhoods where we allow a big warehouse to come and they write a check for a hundred thousand dollars because it's much cheaper than doing the actual engineering and work. And then you don't get it back, but that's why some projects, I'm always really excited when we finally get, Kristen's smiling.
I don't know exactly what project you're talking about.
There's a lot of them that have been on federal.
I can think of five immediately.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it has been something we struggle with for sure.
Federal, yeah.
Sometimes it's hard to build a very small segment when a bigger project.
Seventy-third Avenue, the new industrial building there, seventy-third has a bunch of them. And so it's it's just, I wanted to clarify because when we do traffic impact goes to a bigger pot.
Yeah.
Cash in lieu of it goes to a smaller pot and and but I think it's fair because what you're bringing up is the different revenue sources. And so far you've brought up cash in lieu, traffic impact fee, fuels impact. And then the other four that you mentioned in page three of your cash, which is the other four, which is road and bridge sales tax. The road and bridge property tax, the state user fees, H U T F. And then the fourth one is state federal grants. So if you look at it, what I'm seeing, we've discussed seven sources of money for this that we're talking about now. That help? So if you look at page three of the cash, I know you, we got like two hundred pages that Brian put together. But the cash flow analysis on page three, the PDF page is one forty-seven.
Thank you.
And I added those three other bullet points of the new one.
So the cash in lieu of, is it is it held separately in?
Yes, th- those are reserve funds. Those actually get separated out only for specific use. It is tracked by our finance department from that perspective, so.
And I wouldn't consider them a revenue stream just because it's not consistent and it's project-specific versus like we can plan that we are going to receive funding anywhere within cash and lieu. You can go years upon years and not have a cash in lieu contribution from a developer. And so it's not like a consistent revenue source, but I would probably, I think the commissioner is probably right to kind of lump that with traffic, uh, transportation impact fees. It's kind of plays within that bundle of mine.
So it's not like saved in like a separate like savings account waiting and growing for a project in that area?
No, it 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 just gets put into a reserve fund. It's it's still in public works overall fund and it's just there reserved and identified the dollar value that was given. For a specific area, there's a specific policy that says, I believe it has, those monies have to be used within about a mile of the location of that development.
But it's never enough to do any project there, so it has to be leveraged with other funds.
And learning.
Significantly.
And learning from the past, we have grown much more skeptical and working with Jenny's team about when we recommend cash in lieu. You you will have seen those seen those recommendations much less frequently than in the past.
Certainly, I promise. It it hangs over our heads. And so that's why I always get beat up when we do cash in lieu and we don't follow up with the project. So.
Okay.
So last year, when we raised the alarm around the fund balance in Roden Bridge, we identi- I put together a strategy memo and we identified several prongs worth pursuing. The C O Ps were one of those prongs. Adjusting our strategic reserve approach to make it more flexible is one that Budget and Finance is recommending in this year's budgeting cycle. The work we're doing today is adjusting our C I P project delivery cycle, smoothing out the delivery of these projects. Two, two strategies that we opted not to recommend were delaying our paving program because that's a ten million dollar program. It's a nice chunk of cash we could have not spent. But anytime you delay paving, you you defer costs and have to reinvest in operations maintenance. And then we, some years ago, oh, about six years, seven years ago now, moved all of our Roden Bridge or all of our public works F T Es from the general fund into the Roden Bridge Fund to free up those F T Es in the general fund for other programs across the county. And I I pointed to those and said, hey, look, there's a, there's a whole lot of personnel budget that we could, if if there was room in the general fund, free up Roden Bridge capacity with. But that comes with other costs, so we did not advance that as a recommendation. But it's something worth considering and in the future of what does the longevity and the sustainability of the Roden Bridge Fund look like? If we're paying for personnel costs out of Roden Bridge Fund. But just wanted to point back to the twenty-four memo as this is one piece of a much larger strategy and conversation. C O Ps were another piece, strategic reserve and how how you all are treating that is another. And there are are many other pieces of strategy that we could broach for how to best treat and manage the Roden Bridge Fund. And I think that we will continue to talk about those and get into them over time. But I'm really excited about the fact that you all are engaged in this conversation today and are very forward-thinking about how to implement strategy at the organizational level, but also at the I guess, the the budget and and department level to see the see the the capital investment of our organization into the future. I think it's the the right next step for us and something that's not going to be without pain, but well worth thinking about and investing time in because the spend baby spend approach, my tenure with the county, we we don't have the money for it anymore. And we need to be much more thoughtful about how we're implementing a program that's thoughtful, engaged and in service to our residents.
This have not up for discussion per se, but adjust the Roden Bridge Fund Personnel Budget to the General Fund. And that was presented in twenty twenty-four, so definitely not under Dion's direction. And we're not likely in a position coming into twenty twenty-six to make those changes. What is the opportunity cost? And I know it's an allowable use to include personnel. What aren't we getting done? And that's not a question for today in Roden Bridge. So I think that there needs to be a balance of getting projects done in the field and then also allowing that program, that fund to support personnel. So I just, I I don't know when that started, when that was administrative, but if you could just bring that back at some point of I I feel like we need to strike a balance there between supporting personnel, salaries and benefits or whatever that looks like. And then also getting projects complete in the field.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think there's three parts to that. I appreciate you brought it up, like projects, the personnel and then maintenance. I think it's kind of a three-way balancing that we need to include in the factors. Which is kind of what you get at, because one of the methods you talk about is to cut back on some of our maintenance now that we're at close to seventy percent of our quality. Makes me nervous.
Yeah, I advise we never cut back on me. I'm just gonna say.
Yeah.
Then you're back in the ketchup. You're back in the ketchup.
Yeah, you're just hurting yourself in the long run.
I agree.
Right.
Agreed.
But it's still a three-way kind of like.
Yeah. Three things to consider, three costs.
The burden.
So I wanted to speak briefly to the C O Ps. These are the four project corridors that the C O Ps are supporting. When we borrowed money last year, I do want to own the fact that the four corridors were paired with some larger parks projects at the same time. And the money that we borrowed for those parks projects was significant. And a much, a much larger sum of money than the sum that we borrowed for the Roden Bridge Fund. And we didn't spend a lot of time talking about it. And it created some confusion about the project list. We didn't explicitly spell it out in the study session materials when I was looking back. So I want to apologize for that and say that we will do better in the future about when we are presenting information to you, building out slides and making it absolutely explicit what we're asking for, what C O Ps or what financial tools are doing for you. But I want to make make it clear that the these four projects were in your materials for what we're borrowing money for and paying back over our thirty-year term. And the four projects that are under construction now, three of them should be wrapping up in this calendar year. Sixty-second Avenue should be wrapping up at no later than the second quarter of next year. Weather and environmental contamination issues permitting. And I'm really, I'm really enthusiastic about what borrowing money has done for our program. It's let us get projects where shovels were already in the ground all the way through to completion. And I think that it's really let us show our residents that we're getting stuff done for them. So any any thoughts or reactions to the C O Ps?
I I agree with how we did this last year. What I feel like is, I don't know if it was very clear last year the potential opportunity costs of some of these other projects, like for me, the neighborhood ones, obviously the Berkeley, the Goat Hill. You know, all of those ones that deal with curb gutter sidewalk, and these have curb gutter sidewalk, don't get me wrong, but like there are a few here that like were pushed because we did this, I assume that all the rest were still on schedule and that's going to come up again, but like I think this is great and we made promises to a lot of these businesses, particularly in Pecos, sixty-second and fifty-eight. Major, major industrial areas that are impacted by industrialization. What I didn't know is that we kind of put them a little bit ahead of some of the neighborhood neighborhood ones. And I don't say neighborhood, I think ahead because it was up in our schedule. But I think it kind of freezes up to say, look, we put a lot into some of these heavily industrial areas that really are impacted by this industrialization. And so later on, I may ask how we can dust off what you brought to us last week? To kind of backfill a little bit later, because I think that we ran into an interesting opportunity with what you brought last week. So I'm just saying like I I'm I'm actually emboldened by this. I do think the way you put it in your document, you explain that by borrowing for thirty years, thirty-five million, we've actually saved money because of the cost increases of both debt, the increase of stopping, increase of delay and all those things. So I still support this, but there are people out in the community that have, that need an explanation about this and I think your document helped with that, so thank you.
I I I don't want to delay your your presentation, but I have a question that we were kind of getting dancing around this morning when we did the amendment for the project, was that Pecos Street? So my question is actually more for Heidi because I'm trying to understand what you were saying. I understand, but I'm looking for kind of a legal explanation. Do we as a county, on say on this Pecos Street project, if we can directly point to that one of our utility partners caused us, caused a delay in our project? Do we, do we have any recourse or can we, is there any contractual obligation or commitment we can, you know, have them make to so that we're not bearing financial burden of their delay?
Yeah, I mean, it's a really good question. I I stopped by and talked to Doug real quick between public hearing and coming in here today. And I know he's been working with the public works team and they're they're looking at options. There's a fairly new statute, the statute that Brian referenced in public hearing this morning is just a couple of years old. That gives us an ability to enter into an agreement with utilities for these kinds of projects. In the past, we were just kind of stuck with whatever they wanted to do. And so it's.
So so the only recently we've.
Yeah.
Contract on projects.
Yeah, so it's fairly recent and I don't know if you guys have a better sense, we were going to reach out to our peers on our listserv to see if anyone has had any success in actually holding anybody financially accountable on these agreements. We do know that other organizations have similar struggles to us. But I don't, are you guys aware of any other organization?
No, I I haven't heard of any agency that really has that success of actually doing that. I think the most recent thing with this new statute was through the P U C. There was an action, but there was a significant ramification. I think it was over there near Colorado Springs with a railroad. You know, they're they're considered also a utility kind of component of it and yes, the railroad was forced to contribute. The ramification of that was that the agency now owns a railroad bridge. So that was something, except we, but that was specific to the railroad that I think that's the only thing that I've heard in regards to someone.
Well, I mean, because my concern is obviously if they have no accountability, they're completely disincentivized to be good, to be, I I mean, not that they want a reputation for being a bad partner, but it disincentivizes them to really committing to our schedule, to the schedule of the project and making sure that, and also we as stewards of the public funds, you know, to to just lay ourselves bare like, okay, well, whenever, you know, if there's a delay, we'll just, the taxpayers will just take care of it. I mean, that's kind of how it feels. And so I just, it feels very, it feels, makes us and the taxpayers very vulnerable and very difficult for us then to deliver to the people who are paying for these projects.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a, it's a really good question and I, and like I said, we're looking at it. I don't have all the answers right now. Doug pointed out to me that the statute doesn't provide a remedy, which Brian said. It doesn't say it has to go to the P U C either, which is actually good. Our our success getting the P U C to do anything, it's not been great over the years. So at least a surface read, you know, we're we're spending some more time on it, is that we might have some ability to just try a lawsuit and see what happens?
I mean, I don't, and I don't want us, and clearly we don't want to just, we don't want to have adversarial relationships. But I mean, it's just an idea of of accountability, everybody having skin in the game so that we're all making sure that we're chugging towards the common goal in a reasonable timeframe without any, without, you know, exten- extended delays for, what, I mean, there are weather delays, we all understand those, but they have a lot of projects going on and if we're just getting bumped down the list because for whatever reason.
Or sometimes it's it's their contractors, right? It's the utilities contractors.
Right, and and what's, yeah, and what's the accountability for their for their hiring of qualified, you know, competent?
So we, Doug is working right now with public work staff on trying to come up with a template that we could use as an agreement for these. And and again, we're reaching out to our peers, see if anybody's done this that we can borrow from or or if anybody else has had experience actually trying to enforce one of these. But we're definitely headed down that path to try and give us more of a, at least try to have a contractual remedy that we can try and enforce.
I was just kind of surprised when I heard, because I thought, well, contract from one party has very little accountability to deliver on time or on schedule, or you know, is is was surprising.
Yeah.
So thank you for the clarification.
Brian and I were talking about this actually before we came in the room. You know, there's a legis- a piece of legislation last year that eventually didn't make it through probably because let's face it, Excel is a corporation and can lobby a lot better than local agencies in a lot of cases. But if they were to pass legislation with some teeth that would hold these utility companies, I mean, that's like a dream scenario and I don't, I I mean, it's a fantasy, I'm, I I can admit that, but I mean, that's something. I feel like this, these issues that we're facing with utility companies are fairly universal. You're going to hear it everywhere. And so to me, I really think it's gotten to the point where in a lot of cases, in the case of Excel, they're a for-profit organization. And if it doesn't benefit their business plan, I don't think they care if they're going to do some of our stuff. And that's a really negative view of a partner and I can admit that. But it would be really nice if there was some legal standing where we did have a recourse. And I don't think there's anything legally right now, even if we enter into an agreement that we can really hold them accountable financially.
Heidi, in the negotiation of contracts and the. Heidi, in the negotiation of contracts and the interactions between us and other agencies. Um is there a state standard contract or an Excel standard contract, because they're the eight hundred pound gorilla that we have to sign? Or is there actual negotiations?
You're you're right, that generally if it involves the state. Um they're. Hmm I think probably on par with railroads in terms of negotiating.
So the state, other utilities tend to be, that's why I'm asking, so what I'm asking though is like. I- is it, is it a contractual fix, is it a relationship management fix, is it a contract management fix, is it a project management fix, is it? A legal fix, like through statute and laws, is it a court fix where we say, look, you've. You know, you've harmed us by doing something like, what, and I don't expect you to actually answer that right now, but I think what I'm hearing is.
All of the above, right? Yeah, and that's why I think it's, you know, Public Works came to Doug a couple of weeks ago with this, and and they're working on, I think it's a great, we should be pursuing. Whatever options we have, and I think that's what they're doing. Um of course, the legal remedy is always the least effective and the slowest, right? So in terms of if our, if the option is we file suit.
Yes, a well delineated contract is much faster, like it's in the contract, here's what we're gonna be.
Even to your point, the relationships and the what the other aspects everybody's working on, I think are equally important, because. We're, you're gonna get a lot more by getting your partners to see that you're a partner than. Doug by sending threatening letters, right, like it it, but well, we're working on it just to have that also, right, I mean, we wanna protect ourselves as much as we can, but.
Thank you.
So the project prioritization process that we engaged in this year. Is based on best practices in the industry, what other agencies do. Renee and his team really sank their teeth into. Um what does a data-driven process look like, how do we get uh differing perspectives to the table? Uh not just Public Works or not just engineers at the table. Um and they put together a project scoring system uh based on both engineering uh. Ideology, but also uh environmental uh justice and. Uh sustainability, uh system sustainability, while I have another slide on that in in just a moment. Um we recognize the project score isn't the whole story, though, we need to consider what is a return on investment. Uh in when we're making investments in neighborhoods, and what is the risk associated with the individual projects? What is our level of funding readiness, do projects have associated uh uh grants behind them? Um and then uh in the in our process, we decided that. Having a a one through twenty nine list was was not necessarily gonna cut it. We uh delineated our lists into uh near, middle, and long-term uh tier structure. Uh to help us better understand what what fits into the next five years, what's on deck, and what's on the horizon. Um and then what we're working on today uh is board inputs, uh and then of course iterating from here before we get to final approval. Um and then publishing in a much more transparent way than we have in years past. The C I P working group was made up of representatives from across the organization. We uh brought in a representative from our open space, office of office of strategic partnerships, C E D. Budget and finance and Public Works to make sure that we have people who were. Engaged in the capital improvement program process, but we're also not just uh project engineers. Um and then we had our uh project managers present their projects. Uh ea- assigned each assigned to one of the twenty nine projects. Um and talk about why they were important, where they were at in the process. And speaking to the scoring metrics that were developed uh to. Uh advocate for the project and help the scoring committee really understand what. Why this project was important, what it meant for the community, and what impact it would have.
I I did wanna just add one more component, one of the key things that that they also provided to the committee and the scoring was, where did these projects come from? So we identified all the, wha- whatever plan that they were identified in, whether it was a Making Connections Plan. Whether it was the transportation plan as a whole, it was a key component about so that people would know where they were developed, where did they come up from? So no, they don't just, they they live in my head or in someone else's head, they actually came out of some type of outreach uh with the community.
And the scoring criteria that Renee's team did an excellent job developing uh were across six um. Six areas, um after our uh sessions last week with Commissioner Pinter's feedback. Uh I realized that we don't have sustainability called out specifically as one of those areas. But it certainly fits into system preservation and environmental justice, so I wanted to call that out. Uh for for today, even in Commissioner Pinter's absence. Um and and it and sustainability is a top of mind topic for our team and a passion project for Renee specifically. He's done work with the team on weaving uh. Uh sustainability through the envisioned sustainability program into how we think about our projects and implement them on the ground. Uh so it is an important piece of how we how we implement capital programming in the county.
And I'll also add that um the the criteria that's identified here is also very similar to the criteria that we have. For uh grant applications, so whenever we're applying for a Dr. Cog tip grant, or even um if we're going after build. Um reconnecting communities, any of these grants also have elements of this within those grant applications. So also with us in ranking, if they score high in the ranking of the projects, it's most likely going to score well. In a grant project application.
So I talked a bit earlier about uh tiered program delivery. And we assigned some dates to these because that's important for conceptualizing when we can afford uh projects. These dates aren't necessarily real, because projects are going to flex around. Uh when we get grant funding, uh they're going to move even within the five-year near-term project horizon. Um as priorities shift, maybe there's a a safety component or of a project that prioritizes one over another. Um or a long, a future candidate project that's on. Uh twenty million, has a twenty million dollar price tag associated with it, uh suddenly gets a raised grant, so uh and gets moved up into the near term. Uh so yes, we have date ranges associated with them to conceptualize what we can afford. Uh just based on that uh five to fifteen million dollars annually. Uh but I wanna stress that that is for conceptualizing purposes only, uh and not fixed in stone. That these date ranges are all movable, as are the projects that fit within each of these buckets. And then getting to the meat of today's conversation. Uh the recommended near-term projects, we've identified ten projects for this list. Uh thirty seven million dollar price tag, uh with most of which have uh associated grant funding. Uh so that our return on investment, I think some nine point seven million dollars of those of those. Uh dollar or those funds are uh I grant dollars. Uh becomes one point three five, three two five to one. Uh but I'll I'll start fumbling over my words and get to the project list here. Um we have a number of projects that are out of order, again, because of the grant funding uh. Uh opportunities, uh you'll see that in the non-county funded or non-county uh.
Contribution.
Uh screen behind these Talking Study Session Room uh uh tag on the screen. Uh but the non-county contribution, uh and then the county budget. Uh these are uh remaining dollars that are necessary to complete these projects on the list. Uh the next slide will talk about explanations of each of the projects that are not in order. Uh so for instance, we, our fourth-ranked project is not listed here, that one is Dahlia Street Phase Two. We pulled that one off of the list to make room for a uh commissioner priority project as one example. Um the the list here is. Heavily weighted in favor of the what's uh in favor of what's possible. And of course, the grant funding dollars behind them. Uh the role plot that uh Dion mentioned earlier uh shows you the project list. Uh uh by rank number in orange. And where it's located within the county, if you'd like to give it a walk by, or or get a better understanding of where these projects are within the boundaries of the county. Um to to see where they where they lie in the in the list, but I will stop talking now and let you ask questions or. Or dig into the list from here.
I do have a question, um on Calhoun Byers Bridge, is that, was that a bridge affected by the flooding?
It is not.
So the the original, the original concept of that project was not affected by the flood, but the there is erosion that the flood created. Uh that we are gonna have to deal with now.
Okay.
Is that different?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Is that a different trigger, is it kind of like at your house when you get a, like a.
Larger.
Flood, you could go get insurance, but if you get a drip, you can't, is that kind of like where we can't get flood help?
Yeah, so the the majority of the damage, the reason why we need to replace this bridge is uh something other than the flood.
Which is what?
It's a structural damage, we we got holes in the in the deck.
The wear and tear over time.
What's the cause?
Uh what's the cause of that?
Yeah.
Uh it's just the wear and tear of that, that structure's been there for quite a while.
Can't blame it on the flood.
Can't blame it on the flood, well. Very nice residents at Eastern Adams always talk about the bridge, and I don't know if there is a common. Bridge that they all named the bridge, um. Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure my talk to them, is it Calhoun Byers Bridge, like what bridge is it under?
It's Calhoun Byers, uh it's it's weight restricted, so even the the buses and all that stuff, so. Uh you're not supposed to drive a lot of your bigger piece of equipment or trucks through that road right now.
Okay, my next question is, is so on the funding, and we don't, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on this, um. Is those. Grant dollars that could be made available to us, so the subregional, regional plan dollars. Um I do sit on the state's bridge committee, I can't remember the name of the the actual bridge committee. Um it's actually super interesting, and we've had a lot of feedback to the administrators at C dot. Of how that looks, so is this a potential candidate for any kind of C dot bridge grant funding that's out there? Could be out there, we do that bridge funding um. Call for projects about, we do it once a year, and then we we do review it, we didn't give all the funding out the last go around. So we had, we scored really close in twenty twenty-three, and then. The committee is really sad that they're like, why didn't Adams County resubmit, I was like.
Okay, so so the eighty eighth Avenue Bridge, right there that you see in Wolf Creek, that is one of those uh projects that did get funded. So right now, we're actually in conversation with C dot, C dot is having us retrace our steps in regards to some environmental. Um things that they want us to do now.
Okay.
Uh so so that's where we're at, on on that other one, when we had originally applied, we had actually applied for another bridge, but they told us it was too much. And I think you probably have a lot better information, the overall of the bridge enterprise fund, I believe is where you're.
That's what I might.
So I believe that the overall money that's distributed statewide is uh smaller, yeah.
Yeah, and so it's also, I think, a a scale of the cost of the bridge, you notice um for eighty eighth Avenue, it's a much smaller cost. Um to the bridge versus what we would have with Calhoun Byers, and Renee had mentioned it's weight limited, which is one of the reasons I brought it up in our conversation we had last week. For Fuel Impact Enterprise, because if you look at that location. Um and the detour route for that bridge in this weight limit is fairly new within this year, correct?
I think it started last year.
It started last year, so the fact that we have to weight limit such a remote area and force traffic. Um to detour is a huge impact um for farm-to-road market, freights, general travelers in that area. So that's why um I think when Brian and I were presenting the Fuel Impact Enterprise stuff to you guys, we're like, we really kind of like this project. Because um it's actually right in line with how we see those funds being used. But it's also our number one project, so.
It has ripple effects on the program.
Yeah, so I don't know if you guys want to walk over, we can kind of talk about the detour route.
How far is the detour, Janet?
You know, I don't know the exact number, it's long, it's super, super long. Um and we can look at it together over here, and plus it's good to get up and stretch a little.
It is.
Yes, but we don't want.
After lunch, right?
Exactly, so it is right here, so this is the bridge, we had a weight limit, I wanna say it was fall last year.
It might be a little bit longer than that.
A little bit longer than that, but it's out here, so you can see um in our some private places in this area.
Okay.
So if we were trying to get, let's say here, maybe we have to um detour.
You went thirty-six.
Yeah.
It would be yours thirty-six.
I can't.
Which is the bottom.
I wanna show it.
I think I see every thirty-six.
Yeah, yeah, you would have to go to Rector Leader, which is over here. So you you come over here, then you would have to go across ninety-six, because we, this breaks it up, then you're gonna come back now.
Got it. There's another crossing here.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of.
So the answer right there is no, this is actually more private, uh there's a residence, there's a home right in here. He's got a lot of, and a lot of people do go through there, but they get very upset, uh when we had uh.
Get shot.
When we had uh flood prior to this last one, it's like, I knew I was out there, he basically said, I'll take you, but I don't want you going through there.
Is that part of the. Road tour, road tour, I don't think we went over there.
We did, we didn't.
As a private property owner, he was very secure about.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so I think that we went out to.
Oh, got it.
I have a question, is maybe if you guys are talking about um the factors that you looked at in the scoring, just looking especially down on this end of the map. How are you incorporating to hear about the impact having multiple projects in an area and ongoing disruption, and you know, how does that fit into? Is that part of the risk analysis um in the process?
Yeah, i- it is, and so we also have um, you know, how come my utilities, like we have a coordination, but we have. What we call specifications that we try to forth our contractor, we have a contractor coordination back, which basically requires, and we identify which projects we might have in the vicinity. Any other ones that we're made aware of, and we tell them you have to coordinate with these, to make sure that you're not closing up. On neighborhood projects, we actually uh we have a specification that says you can't close off two adjacent streets, because at that point in time, when. Somebody has to walk, we don't want them walking a real long distance, so that's what we try to deal with that.
Well, I'm also thinking about just the impact, seeing a particular area, just being constantly under construction.
Yeah.
You know, those kinds of things, it can also be effective.
Well.
Once it's done, it's done.
It's a man and city.
Right, I mean, there's.
It's kind of like, oh, we don't wanna, we don't wanna do sidewalks in that neighborhood, yeah, I know.
Any other um projects you want us to see on the map?
Tell us about the other bridge projects.
Sorry, what about the.
This is, this is the same year, half, you take the avenue.
This, this is a future one, this is actually a bridge project, also this is Strasburg Road, and it's also over the same, this is over Kyle.
I have a question.
Bridge, bridge.
Lynn, Lynn mentioned, are you on the road bridge?
That one over there is not, uh that is that you have got any intersections, so that's one of the ones that they're saying forward.
Okay.
Bridge, bridge, I was going to call victory.
Oh, big tree over there, yeah.
I was, I was asking Lynn, Lynn, like Lynn's question was a good one. Are we potentially paying for bridge projects that either C dot should be paid for, or that the? Let's start there.
So I think I might be able to answer that, so the bridge project that we're showing, these are actually owned by us. The the way that C dot works and stuff like that, they have their specific naming convention. And what they do do for us, though, is actually inspect. But all of these that we we were showing right in here, we have a list of a little bit over a hundred and four bridges that we actually own. The definition of a bridge is anything over from twenty feet and above, and so they they actually even got our own naming convention to to them. And we identified now, C dot actually pays for the inspection, and then they tell us what the condition is. Uh because they're they're overall responsible for the safety of all of these structures, they'll send us, uh if they find something wrong in one of these structures, they'll send us what they call an essential repair finding. And that I I just, but we do that now, we, from a county perspective, anything less than twenty feet, we actually hire our own consultant to go there and inspect. And give us their reading source, figure out what they intend to buy for us to fix.
So is Calhoun Byers a total replacement?
Yes.
It is.
Yeah.
I think that's a really, so what you just shared, I don't know where you're. You were talking on the map of how many bridges we do own, I think that that's a really good talking piece when we talk to the public. Because they're like, our dirt road, these folks are like, you know, we don't have curb gutter and sidewalk, but if we own them. These folks are like, you know, we don't have curb gutter and sidewalk, but if we own that many bridges, I think that that's magnitude that the public needs to understand. So if it's a hundred plus bridges, cuz twenty feet is substantial, don't set it up, yeah, yeah, it is a substantial number of. Of length.
I I have another question. On the ones like the one that you have, the Calhoun. Um we didn't ask for anything in the last tip side. And I'm wanna start to wonder if we should regret that, because some of these things seem regional. Like that we might have like, like, oh man, did we miss out on an opportunity? And I'm not trying to like blame storming the past, but I'm saying like, are there opportunities for some of these projects that we could get? Regional nature through our Adcock Dr. Cock process. We worked really hard to get three million dollars every cycle into that eighty percent bucket. And that was something that uh Eva pushed me out. You guys.
I was on.
Everybody on.
You guys, she pushed me out to be the tip of the spear on that with these guys. But I'm wondering, like, when we forego asking for a pot of that money, we're building goodwill with our cities, is it time for us now to say, hey, remember we supported you guys last time? We can cover some of the costs of these projects with our with that bucket.
So Dr. Cock tip actually wouldn't score a bridge project well, because there's dedicated bridge funding through B T. And so there's as in actually.
B T E tell.
B T Bridge Tunnel Enterprise, so that's the funding source that they use to do the bridges. And in the last cycle.
C dot does?
Um C dot does, but they actually routed through um. Oh my gosh, it not C M L, it's one.
C C S I.
C C I, thank you.
We have the C C I working group in a.
Yeah, so we actually, they actually go to that group to help prioritize the applications from um local governments. To do the ranking, that thing goes back to C dot for funding.
Okay.
And um I think you guys, I think you two are, if I remember right.
I'm on the bridge.
You're on the bridge.
For C C I.
Yeah, and so we, in the last cycle.
Kind of a horse. Yes, it is C C I because um Eric.
Eric.
Urban. Recommended.
Did did we make any requests for the B T?
Yes, for the last cycle, we did, and we actually were successful with eighty eighth Avenue.
God.
And so the next cycle is actually coming up here. I wanna say this. And um so um but again, the amount of funding that is available for that um is much lesser than. So the same way that um we are looking at raise versus mega, the scale of the cost that you request requesting. Is a restricting factor. Um so because this is a million or eleven million dollar project, we won't score well when it comes to um. The cost benefit analysis versus a bridge that's lesser than cost. So we really have to game, that sounds terrible, so game, but we really have to game and strategize. Um the best project that we have that fits the criteria of that project. Um and so for example, if I come down, if I can ban it down here.
Yes, please.
Um you know, we had our Go Hill project, and if you looked at the congressional discretionary spending.
Yes.
Go Hill was an amazing match with that. Now unfortunately, politics politics. And we didn't get quite there with it, but it was selected by um you know, our Congress folk. And um unfortunately, that didn't work out for us, but that's what we're really doing, is we're saying for each application that comes up. We start gaming what would be a good project to pursue.
Sure.
And who can we partner with to show a regional element or a partnership amongst which we can leverage. Um when we're applying for these grants, cuz let's face it, if you go in for a grant by yourself, or if you go in with a grant with Morton. Or Brighton, Culver City, it makes your project more attractive, so that's a lot of the philosophy that we've had. I wanna say. Fairly successful um with looking at that, so um. We have to really kind of look and say, not the most expensive project maybe isn't always the best grant application.
Right.
And it's this weird calculus that we do.
I see how you put that. What we literally discussed in the last two minutes, three different sources that we might be able to use, but they have different criteria and strategy for each. One would be the Adcock Dr. Cock.
Yeah.
One would be the B T E, which is Bridge uh.
Tunnel.
Tunnel and Enterprise, and then the third one you mentioned was congressionally directed spending. Those are three different sources, we can add to that list of seven that we mentioned earlier. But and it shows that you're actually doing it, cuz that's how you have some of these that jumped up, cuz we have opportunity, cuz we got those grants. But I think that's something to celebrate when we go out there. Also, we can celebrate that we have some of these things in the eastern planes. In areas where people are feeling like they're always left out, everyone's always gonna feel left out, but I think we can do that. Um but if we can like in this next round of B T E, identify. Every place where we can get stuff, I will tell you, my my concern is always gonna be the neighborhood projects. That's literally what I ran on, it's my whole focus, it's everything about. And it's not that I wanna do it at the expense of the others, but do it in conjunction with, and so if we could find ways to move some of these other bridge stuff. Get them off the list, not by ignoring them, but by completing them.
Yep.
Then I, you're gonna have my support in that.
Which was exactly where I was, where Brian and I were trying to gently bring in last week, we're like, hey. If you use these Fuel Impact Enterprise with the twelve point eight that we have coming in, you can fund that project and we can shift that list upward. I also wanna point out the asterisks that Brian has on there. I think the neighborhood project to seventy third Avenue is something that can compete. And so that's why we really moved it up in the list, is it's our intention to apply through our numerous grant cycles that we have coming up. For those grant processes and hopefully be able to launch that baby up as well. So that's kind of this, a little bit of a strategy of what we're trying to show in there, but the neighborhood projects. Unfortunately, um the settle of the disadvantaged community is no longer a book to con. As a good thing, and so we have to phrase.
It's still a real thing, it's just not a good thing cuz it's.
It's not the same.
It's a current decision maker.
Not a selling point for a grant.
It's still a real thing.
So so we're really focusing on other aspects right now and with the way that we're describing the project, so. We're we're working on our terminology as we're preparing these.
That's true.
These projects, yes.
Force accessibility.
Connectivity.
Well, yeah, I actually, I I have a question.
My question is, especially for these out here, are any of these projects, are we looking at asking for. Congressional spending from Lauren, this is all Lauren's district, right? And so we didn't have much of an ask for her last time, but is this something that she might be interested in? Um in investing in some of these areas?
I think that's a wonderful idea, you know, we were really focused on my neighborhood projects for the last time, because we thought we um.
It's different administration.
It was a different.
It was different.
Go Hill under Biden was more attractive than a than an eastern plain bridge, but now, under Trump, an eastern plain bridge might be.
Yeah. Values a lot, yeah.
Yeah, so for that, for the last cycle, we did, Go Hill was successful, we had the Du Pont uh Pond. Um we didn't get as much looks on that one, but I think that one actually might be better for the current, because it's a water project.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Um and uh and I think there's some ways that we can sell it. But um it it, but you're exactly right, have a look at who we're selling to.
Yeah.
Have we, have we talked with, cuz I know we're uh there's an agent with Thornton for a hundred and forty. And that's actually on there, so seventy eighth between Washington and uh York there and and then uh McKay from a hundred and fourth to ninety sixth. I can tell you from being on Thornton City Council, that McKay Road, there are a lot of people in Thornton complaining about traffic on McKay Road, so have we talked, are we, are we, can we partner with them on some grants or or?
We did, and we were successful.
But on, so we were.
So McKay's up then.
Oh, that, oh, sorry, okay.
That's the great funding.
Oh, okay.
Five million.
So.
That's how McKay jumped up a little.
This is nine counties, non-county, is that grants?
So this project specifically.
Grants or a contribution.
Yeah, so so the whole thing about the staff's work on McKay is that it's a two million dollar project, they got seventy five percent from the external.
It.
My, I had a big brain, I had a brain flash there, okay, so, but here's my question about number three, so. Are we talking, we're just talking about funding the, this, are we talking about funding this study right now, or?
It, yeah.
No, it's the actual construction for safe risks.
No, no, the the McKay, yeah, I it does include a.
No, no, number three, no, number three, the low.
Yeah.
Oh, I shifted.
Or low one, oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's um a project that we worked with the school.
That's just for design.
Oh, no, it's it's.
It it'll be constructional.
Yeah.
Oh. So, okay, so so you still, so you want that in position number three at at a full fifteen million? No, fifteen thousand, I was saying, never mind, never mind, sorry, okay.
Having a rough day.
So the fifteen thousand investment there will get the actual construction done.
Yes, okay, wow.
Yeah, so the grant scheme is like, is 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 our our way to really leveraging the county budget.
Yeah, for sure.
Stretching.
Yeah, stretch, yeah.
So when you guys, I guess the question, and I I love, like. You brought up the fact that by using some of that fuel impact, you might be able to move a lot of things up. The question is, is what's the appropriate use of fuel?
Yeah.
And Emma brought up, she doesn't want, and it makes sense. Business as usual, just roads and bridges and like, you know, like something a little bit more impacting humans. But if we use some of that and the outcome is to move things up, cuz you're getting some of the bridge stuff out of the way. And you can bring back some of the curb gutter sidewalk neighborhood stuff, then you're helping the humans and addressing, it's kind of a win-win.
But and also the emissions of that detour right now over the the.
Yeah.
The Calhoun, the Calhoun buyer's bridge, that's significant.
Environmental benefit.
Yes, and that's why we were kind of, hey, look at this one, guys.
The whole thing.
Yeah, we we tried doing a detour right here at Rector Peter, which is the, we were doing the. We tried doing one and the community just pushed back, cuz we we said, oh, you guys can find your own way. This was like a almost a fifteen mile detour is what it was.
Yeah, same, actually. A question on this line.
So if we were to take these two off, because we use the other. Maybe we'll all be the same, but um. You go to the next.
The mid.
Didn't you also do the same, like you did the first two years of the. You have enough of the six million plus the twelve million, you could hammer out the one and the two and the four. Right, and you're helping the neighborhood there, and it's heavily influenced by that.
Yeah.
You literally have oil and gas.
Oh, my God.
In that neighborhood.
Very much, very, very much.
Yeah.
You could like, holy, that's why, you need to start moving these up.
That's a good one to, so.
Yeah, and we can move some of these up, at least keep moving down the path on some of these neighborhood things, because I promise you everything. Obviously, we believe, and there is documents out there showing that we thought these things would be done by twenty four, twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight. And to say. So let's, I'll let you go ahead.
So um Brian, if you could go back one page. Um so, yeah, you you know exactly what it is, it was two, but um Calhoun buyers, I think, is um totally viable for a Fuel Impact Enterprise. I'm not sure that um the second project would in the same way, because it's not as much of a um freight empire impact area. But we probably could look at Old Victory Road. Um where uh we, that is specifically to address uh freight safety issue.
We're only two hundred thousand, so that's easy.
And we have two hundred thousand there, and then the next.
I'll look probably at phase two.
Is also available for free. Because of the businesses that are long back corridor are predominantly freight businesses. And the traffic count on the coast.
You actually listened to the public hearings from twenty fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty on seventy third, it's all industrialization.
Yes.
And the promises there have been about freight and.
And feel and.
What about the humans?
The a flood that happens with it, with a with a heavy rain on seventy third, I mean flood like almost like, it's scary, impassable.
Julie? Um so, just kind of putting this in perspective, if we, so you you have your your near term list. Whatever, the first set of projects, yes, this list. And if we start adding additional projects onto this list, what is the reality? Of completing the project, right? Just because you have all the money in the world and you want to do all the projects in the world. It doesn't necessarily mean you could literally get all of them done in the timeframe that you're thinking about, cuz there is logistics. There are people power, like, so how does that work within your department? Of if we add to this list by using some of the fuel impact funds. Is the same timeline. Like hit or or like, would we still be able to complete all of these projects plus the additional ones in the timeframe that we're thinking? It could be done, or is there an extended timeline, frankly, just because you only have so many staff and hours in a day to manage projects? Yeah.
So this list, I I advanced this to the proposed cash flow uh uh showing how we're pacing the projects over the five years.
Yeah.
Um represents a slowdown, in fact, for Renee's team uh in design. Um so this would open up their capacity to take on more work potentially. Or to dive deeper into in-house design or to uh to do more detailed work on uh on the ground. Uh collaboration with our onsite inspectors. So this this pace is a slowdown from the breakneck speed we've been operating at for the past seven years. Did I, did I categorize that well?
Very well.
Okay.
Uh so we do have human capacity, I would hesitate to sign us up for another seven years, like the past seven years. Uh because we don't wanna burn people out, but that said, we know what they're capable of, and they've shown us what they've got. And they do amazing work in the design. Uh but I also wanna be really cognizant of where we've fallen down, and that's in communication and really taking care of the community. So I wanna be thoughtful about doing great work in design. And doing really great work in how we're communicating and taking care of our residents at the same time.
Well, bringing in the community and with buying with the projects that were.
I I really appreciate Julie's question, and and I think like. The question still, it kind of is out there and you answered it, but also like, when I see this, it looks like the constraint of getting Calhoun buyers done in twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, looks fiscal based on this. And in part, though, there is some capacity constraint, you said. And so I guess my question is, if we were to say, let's use the uh the uh fuel impact fee, could you still speed it up? Uh or is the capacity constraint overwhelming? The reason I ask that is because it's kind of what Julie and you are kind of going back for, then it's a little bit of both, right? Sometimes it's a capacity of time. That's slowing projects, and other times it's a capacity of money, and we have to wait until we get the money in hand to be able to invest. But if there are opportunities where sometimes you can also contract out certain functions, so we don't lose. The opportunity to get lower pricing, cuz the cost of waiting, as you've taught us, continues to increase. So I guess it's a little bit of, I understand break, I don't wanna break Renee's head, you know, neck, breakneck speed. But if it means you like, hey, we can move up. This eleven billion dollar Calhoun project to next year by either hiring another person or contracting some of those functions out. Can you have your cake and eat it too? You know what?
I appreciate that question.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yes.
You might say millions of dollars by hiring somebody.
So one of the things we, Brian and I have been talking about is one of our critical paths is our right of way group, it's pretty small for the amount of work that we do. So contracting out and having like an owner's rep that we can use for our right of way acquisition for a project like this. Would bring huge benefit. Now, I am going to tell you.
Bridges are a little.
Yeah, bridges are a little bit different, but um using an owner's rep with right of way is a little expensive. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be.
How does it net out?
It it eventually, just within timing of the project, balances, like it's worth it just for the time window that you're shrinking it down. But um but uh you're to your point, you could hire additional staff. Um and have it be a long, a longer standing thing, but at the same time, we wanna respect Ellie, cuz she's very good. And if you help me, don't spend more than five million or fifteen million dollars, I'm doing what that lady says.
And that gets to the liquid capital problem of if we're if we're taxing the bottom of our uh of our red bridge fund available capacity. Uh the reason I'm pacing out so carefully in this year over year cash flow. Uh and you see some spikes and dips because of our uh regional transportation contributions on a different slide. Um is I don't wanna put us into the red, I don't wanna be the public purse director that overspends the red bridge fund. So we, it would be lovely if we could spend thirty seven million dollars upfront, but we can't do that unless we borrow more money.
The difference is if we have it in hand, because we're using a source that, like, we're getting twelve million this year.
Exactly.
Right.
Are we, are getting six point four and we received six point four from last year, so twelve point eight in the bank.
This is what you're saying with the peaks and the valleys, and I do think after, I think Lynn has a question, but then you could show us the true, the regional piece, so we could get the big picture of why.
Yeah.
This isn't. This is.
Right.
I just want to go back to what you were talking about, Steve, and it really is a philosophy of. The board and with you, Dion, of. Really doing like a quick cost benefit analysis of do we bring in contract work to fortify? What we're trying to do and pay a higher cost, but they're done, they're in, they're out, and we don't carry the overhead over a long period of time. We also don't go through, it needs to go through a budget process and we need to scope a position and it has to go out for posting. And then the whole interview pro, you know, a twelve to eighteen month process, you know, same thing with the IT help desk, do we come in? Have a identified what we task that we want an outside contractor to do, have them come in, just plow through it. Pay a higher cost for a short term so we can implement much quicker and be more nimble. So I think that's something that we'll look for you, Dion, to come back to us, I don't know if that's something we want to talk about now.
But also. And it's the benefit of the shortening the timeline too, though, because. And work done, and we get the person on board.
And this is a huge pivot in. How the board has approached work in the past, which is bring on permanent, you know, just add a person, add a person, add a person. Well, before we know it, we have many people doing different things, and I think that's where we see this cascading of. Repurposing as people leave, maybe that person was hired for something specific, no one remembers what that was. So just a tool in our tool belt, if you want to know on that a little bit.
Well, we've talked about, you know, how we get sort of operational blow or creep. That's one of the factors that plays into it, there's definitely a cost to contracting and I think doing that analysis is really worthwhile. Because there is some upfront costs, there's some administration that you have to deal with, we are overseeing contractors. And there's some benefits when you have short-term, shorter-term project that's identified that you can boost up. You know, your, your priority list, yeah, there's probably something to be gained from that, it won't make sense for every project, but I think. Kind of looking at what is the cost benefit ratio, I guess, for something like that is definitely, I think we have to start. Thinking about more and how much risk tolerance do we have for that kind of thing.
Well, and I really appreciate you guys recognizing the value in our staff, they truly are our greatest resource and we want to keep them. They are amazing and so knowing, um, that we wouldn't put additional pressure on our people and be able to keep them. At a comfortable peace where they don't feel overwhelmed and just jump ship for the next place. But finding, uh, creative ways that we can keep work flowing, but not torture our people. Is definitely a path that I think is attractive for us as a team.
So I, I went ahead and queued up the regional commitments table, these are. Uh, commitments that are real today, that we have agreements in place for. We have other, uh, theoretical commitments on the list of if we get funded for this grant. Then we've got money on, money committed to projects. But I wanted to boil it down to what are our actual commitments right now, uh, for this list. And the, the one that I'm anxious about, I guess, is coming up in twenty-seven and that's right out, out our front door here, uh. At E four seventy and Sable, uh, where we've got three point three million dollars, uh, as our, our final payment to that project. So I want to make sure that we're being very conservative in twenty twenty-seven, so that we've got plenty of money in the bank to, to cover that expenditure.
How much of that is being paid for by other entities and how much of the percentage of that project is being paid for by us?
So it is a. Let me see if I remember this right and correct me if you all remember differently, it is a. Third split, but we have a ceiling. So it was a one-third Brighton, one-third E four seventy, one-third us. But in our contract, we were very specific about saying we will not pay more than, what is it, uh, seven million dollars. Um, and then everything above seven million or everything above the twenty-one million dollars total. City of Brighton is going to be incurring as a cost.
That, that project kind of came out of the blue and jumped to the top, but I look at that as because it was an opportunity. Am I wrong in that? Like, it was kind of an opportunity issue, like if we missed that and didn't contribute. May have been gone and then we'd be kicking ourselves later.
It was also a commissioner priority.
Yeah, but I'm just saying like. It's a big one, but I don't feel like we want to stop that.
No, it could open up.
We might finally get the development out.
Yeah, it could open up huge economic opportunity.
So, yeah, that's, that's regional commitments, but I know we've, we've jumped around, we've got a.
Tell us about the US eighty-five hundred twentieth interchange. So where are we with that in reality? Because I am so lost on that project.
It's a, it's a long-term project, Janet, do you want to speak to it?
I'll speak to it. So that project, um, the commissioners committed eight million dollars for total throughout the life of the project. Um, we received a Chrissy grant for that, for the initial, um, design, um, phase of it. The grants that we've been pursuing based off of advice that we've gotten from our legislative team. Was keep going after raise or build now, keep going after these because being upfront and in. In their face to a certain level is going to help you show the importance of the project to the community. C dot themselves are not contributing anything. Um, other than maybe some staffing, just because this isn't a priority within their tenure plan. But the more grant funding we're able to receive, the more it's going to push. Very similar, it's like when we give a big grant, it moves the project up the list, it's going to do the same thing for C dot. So we applied for a raise grant for utility work and some environmental work. Um, and some of the railroad work that had to be done, we weren't successful in that build grant. But we'll continue as those grant program, programs come along to do it, it's a humongous project. And so it, this is something like, um, it's, when I first started, I was an engineer, I had projects where I'm like, oh, I'll never see that. Belt, you know, kind of thing, and gradually as times gone by, I'm like, oh, my God, they built the interchange. And I'm driving through it and I'll go the other direction and I'm like, yay, I'm going to see this. I have a hunch, that's one that I'll see maybe when I'm approaching retirement, so, um, but maybe not. You know, uh, it's just such a massive project. But I think as development occurs and I think as that area, um, grows more. It's going to get more and more attractive over time and we're playing the long game. Um, and sometimes you just have to commit and I've seen it in my own work experience with C dot. Just keep pushing the envelope and I think you guys have shown that with I two seventy and with, um, I twenty-five.
This, this hundred twentieth and US eighty-five has been on the list since I joined.
Yeah, you did.
The US eighty-five hundred twentieth project has been on the list since I joined this team. And it's been something we've talked about every single time we go to DC. It's something we talk about with Commerce City, the thing about hundred twenty, the hundred and fourth. They are, there are ways for us to access DIA. And for an entire metro, north metro area to access DIA without having to go on E four seventy. So I guess, like, as we, I think we just keep pushing for that regional approach, but if our messaging or, or. Arguments need to change or, you know, continue to do it, but I do think like. Maybe talking with Denver and others about how that's important relief for. Pena and some of these others could be helpful, but I, I appreciate that update. Because it is, it's just like perpetually been on that list.
Well, and I'll tell you, every time I go to a US eighty-five Polish and they're like, Janet, when are you building it? And I'm like. I'm hoping.
Well, does that help them if we get them to help us?
I think they offered to support us with letters of support and different things like that, so I'll reach out to their staff and request them as part of our application process. I think also the strategy that we're using with our partners, having multiple people be the lead on an application. Is also, so we kind of rotate turns, um, to apply for these grants. So if Adams County is successful in one place, they're, they're like, sit down, Adams County, maybe it's Commerce City, you know? So that partnership with our, um, joint agencies on it is really helpful to kind of spread out. The message of how important it is, very similar to what we've done with I twenty-five and then also I two seven.
So on a hundred and twenty eighth and eighty-five, what is the, the runway there? What is like the timeline? Because I know, and maybe it's been corrected, is that. I think that's a project we've worked on with Commerce City when I was on the city council of Brighton, I mean, it's like. Upwards of ten years, eight years probably. And we just did not get any support or coordination with the city of Thornton, so is there a way that they can also? Contribute, I think they did write a letter of support, um, bring them along, they're, they're one of the biggest benefactors. As far as travel is concerned, east-west of, on that corridor.
Yeah, Thornton hasn't contributed financially, but Thornton does write a letter for us every time we request it. And for our partner agencies, and then of course Brighton will apply for things, Commerce City will apply for things and then we apply for things. And so that's, uh, really helpful, C dot, although I wish they were more active partners. They do step up and participate, so like the Chrissy Grant project that they just wrapped up the IGA for. They really participated, um, uh, with, uh, FRA in crafting the IGAs. And some of the scoping of the work, so even though they aren't coming to the table with money today. They're participating and seeing the future of the project. So really the big thing is we have to finish the Chrissy Grant and get that preliminary design. And then we just take the next step, I kind of see it like eating an elephant, you take it one bite at a time. And so, um, we have some good things going for the project right now in the sense that we have the capability of having that design. That's going to make us have more, um, information for grant applications when that's complete, so that we can be, um. More, uh, directly tying information to those criterias to make us more eligible. And so we'll just keep one step at a time and biting off private phases. So that we can eventually build it because it is such a massive cost to build it. Sorry, I go pillow that project too. The things you love, you could just talk about for hours and so I'm like, shut up, Janet, nobody cares about that the same way you do.
So earlier I mentioned that several of our projects were out of sequence and on the near-term list. So we, we took Dahlia Street Phase Two, um, off of the list to create space for Seventy Third Avenue. Just to, uh, uh, financially on the cash flow, uh, in the five-year plan. Seventy-Eighth Avenue is ranked number six, uh, it is a twenty-two million dollar, uh, price tag. Uh, that's one that might be a candidate project for breaking into phases potentially to, uh. Uh, make it more affordable or, uh, one that we can hopefully find, uh, grant opportunities to move it up in the future.
That's, you're still talking about Dahlia on that one?
Uh, or Seventy-Eighth Avenue.
Don't send it right that into phases, okay, number six.
And then, uh, number seven, the, uh, Berkeley Gardens Neighborhood Project is a fifteen million dollar price tag. We moved it to the medium-term list, uh, uh, just again because of the magnitude of cost. Looking for grant opportunities and ways to fit it into the program. Fifteen, sixteen and twenty-seven were grant-funded projects, which is what elevated them onto the, to the five-year list. Um, and similarly, uh, fourteen, uh. At East Seventy Third Avenue, we wanted to make sure that we included that into the five, in the five-year list, recognizing it as a priority project for the board.
Do you have access to your email if I sent you something?
I, I can go to on that.
How do we do it possibly?
We talked, then we talked about last. I'm saying I don't, I don't think you'd want to stream his email, but.
Quite agree, the long-term list, let me remind myself. Yes, no, it was ranked number ten, it's, uh, on the.
And how, and so now it's down with, it, why is it that on the? I, I'm confused why we, that's getting bumped all the way down to future project, I wonder so much work has been done on it.
We just really have design and we haven't acquired the right-of-way, so it's not as far along in the process as some of the other projects. That we've worked on historically, so like Seventy Third is more elevated because we already have the right-of-way for it. And it has complete design, so that's, that's one of the reasons.
You know, I'm sure there are nuances that I, that are not broadly apparent to me, but I have to tell you that I feel like. That is a major artery to get people under the interstate and we are, Adams County, you know, helped get midtown developed. We've increased, we've increased the population of people in that vicinity. Near that, I mean, that's only one, that's only one access point for them, not certainly all of it, and. I just feel badly that, thinking about all the work that's been done to this point, to have it been on hold for such a length of time that. You tell me, I guess my question, my concern and you tell me where, how it lands. Are we gonna have to go back and redo a lot of work? That's been done on that project if we push it down, if it goes this far down the list at this point and there's no date in sight. Do we, do we risk, run the risk of having to redo all of the work, I guess, where we are now?
The answer is no, so the ninety percent drawing, um, stage is a good place for us to be. And, um, as we're acquiring right-of-way, which is on our plan, basically, it's going to get more attractive. Our intention is to reevaluate this list every year. And make changes based off of as we're getting grant funding, as we're completing projects. So would this, this project be in this space forever? I would say no, I bet you even next year as right-of-way is completed. And as we're wrapping up some of the other things, depending on how we're using the Fuel Impact Enterprise. If we're able to get a grant for it, because I think that one could be viable, especially for transportation alternatives. For the call for projects for STIP, um, or for, I'm sorry, for, uh, Dr. Cog Tip. You know, we could be applying for a couple of these projects and that would change, change the equation. As it were, so, um, right now, it, it makes sense just because we got a lot. But that's not to say it wouldn't go into the middle section. Even next year or a year after that, as we move further along.
And that does bring up a point of maybe three buckets is the wrong approach, uh, for messaging. Maybe we have a five-year list and an on-deck list, um, where all of the other projects sit.
I, I think given what Janet just outlined in terms of how things can hopscotch or leapfrog around. Maybe that's, and because priorities are going to continue to, so there's, there is, there's, I think there is something psychological to the idea of. When you say it's on the long-term list, I mean, then, most people are going to go, never gonna, they're gonna say, there's gonna be palms up, never gonna happen. So, given all of the nuances and funding, uh, triggers that we have going on. Maybe an, an on-deck list, and again, it's your priority shift as, as development happens. That, both inside and outside the county that impact, you know, in, you know, inside and outside our jurisdiction that impacts us and so on and so forth. Just because that, when we talked about it at length last week, I'm aware of how, it stopped my mind how long that process has been going on and. Then to see it designated to the long-term list is troubling.
One of the things, I, and I was able to send it to the commissioners, but I can't send it to you because I was going to say if we could put it up there, but. Like even in January of two thousand twenty-four, we had stuff that was shared with the public showing like. All these projects, expectation of, of completion. And I understand what we talked about as far as timing goes, but like we told folks that, you know, we expected. Some of these projects to be done in twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, nothing was past twenty-eight except for. Let's see, this one was York fifty-eighth, it's two, two, four, and that was even twenty twenty-nine. And now it's like, and so the hard part, and I've got, like, I did a presentation for some of those neighborhoods. Talking about all the different curb gutters and sidewalk projects that we had in those neighborhoods, and at the time we had PDFs that had those dates on them. And it's hard when I go out there relying on information even at the time. And then I go back and I, they, these websites don't exist anymore. The PDFs, I don't know where they are, do you guys have the history of each of those PDFs as they were changed along the way with new dates and new? Uh, so I can, because it makes, when people see and I hand stuff out, like at those meetings or we make comments at like a Berkeley neighborhood meeting. Or Welby neighborhood meeting or all these neighborhood meetings, I'm now kind of like, there's some people that have asked me like. I can't trust what you guys say because you're going to change it later and then I can't even find what you said before. And I need us to, to just own when we change dates and times and, and money. Because it looks, they literally have been called a liar and I, and I don't like that. And so if we can work together on the transparency piece and just own, hey, here's why, rather than making it look like we're hiding it, because I don't believe we are. I know that we're just changing tactics on our, we moved it from the PDF. I know that we're just changing tactics on our, we moved it from the PDF to a page, to a map. But by not showing the history, we lose credibility and people are not believing us. And it's really hard to go back out when I relied on something in the past, made some commitments of this is how we do these projects. You spend ten years to get it on the list and try to get progress. And then all of a sudden, at the end, it feels like Lucy's pulling that football out from underneath you, you know? And it's um, it's Lucy, right? You know, but and that's what the hard part I'm having with all this is because. So that's the hard part I'm having on the, on the transparency side, but also every one of these, when we made commitments to the community, were commitments and promises. And when they, we don't go back and say this is why it needs to change, we just expect them to figure it out. We need to do some, some work, but it hurts us, like literally personally. And it hurts us when we've been out there listening to folks. And I think your criteria is a good start, but you, I like how you said at the beginning, it doesn't take into account the human element. It may take into some objective things, but like there are a lot of like accidents that I've seen on some of these streets that are never reported. You know, so they're not gonna be reflected there. You see people with kids on strollers and people with mobility impairments that it, it might sound good on that bike, but it, like the human element or people in Berkeley who've had water rushing through their windows. You know, that's not reflected in the criteria. So I really appreciate how you guys have allowed the flexibility of the conversation today to say, look, the criteria and the scoring was just an example or a starting point, but not the end. And I would love to see the details of the scoring. I think it would be good to see those, like you could send that to us and say, here's the ten people, here's how each one, you know, scored. I think that would be kind of beneficial for us to kind of see it um and understand it before we adopt it. You know, because it is different than the other C I P scoring. What we do for facilities.
We do this as a parallel effort.
It's a parallel effort, but the factors and the criteria are different. And it's important for us to know what's the difference between our value based criteria in this facility C I P versus transportation C I P versus, there was another one that you mentioned, that's another like scoring group that we have.
Oh, grants, yeah, just like what we're going after grants.
And I think like it's fair to say like, do we need to change? Why would we want, maybe you do, one different criteria and values based criteria for one, different than the other, different than the other. But maybe, maybe it's a good conversation to have um for consistency. Um, so I'd love to see the scoring, like the actual scoring, not just the criteria, but the, um, can we go to the projects table, the first one? Kind of summarizing what we talked about. Use, I heard you guys say that, and of course it would be up to the commissioners to talk about that fuel impact. But you could fully justify the fuel impact knocking off the first one, maybe not the second one, but maybe even, where are the others that are really heavily impacted by industrials, Eighty Eighth Avenue Bridge?
So I think we could totally do um Calvin Byers. I think old victory is a really good argument because it's a safety free issue. And then I think Dahlia, um, we could make an argument which is on the middle list. Um, and I, I need to probably look at um Eighty Eighth Avenue because another part of it is because we already had um Bridge Tunnel Enterprise funding for that. Sometimes they won't let you use two, and so.
Source, right?
Stack it, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, so that one, I think I have to look and see um really kind of dig into the legislation and some of their rules that they have.
And I will raise a, a secondary alarm to the one that Janet raised last week on Fuels Impact Enterprise. We received outreach from C dot um for our second payment, our twenty twenty five payment in that program, saying, hey, we're ready to make this payment. And then they went radio silent on us uh immediately after the state budget announcement. So with budget cuts, we could be looking at a very real uh cut to the Fuels Impact Enterprise program. So I'm bracing myself for this, I haven't heard anything real or official, but I do wanna be aware of and brace ourselves for that program going away. We do have six point four million dollars in hand and they will have to pry it out of my.
Legal question to say, can they legally not fulfill that? I mean, I know the feds are doing it right now, but like.
I was gonna say, I might have had a different answer a year ago.
I think that's important, but that changes a lot of what I'm.
They did the same thing with M M O F, so they um they removed um M O F, M M O F um funding for grant projects, so that's why we actually pushed out um the uh tip process, uh the Dr. Cog Tip Grant Application. Um, it was supposed to be this next year, but they pushed it out a year because they're actually using other funding sources internally into Dr. Cog to fund those projects that were supposed to be funded through the mixture, because Dr. Cog basically takes all the money, dumps it in a big pool and kind of just funds everything that's collected. And so um that was when basically shifted out the call for projects here. Was because, and then the left ones were taken away from the state and they're trying to back fund it for that first fiscal year of that next call um to make those projects as whole as possible. And so that's why we probably won't see an actual Dr. Cog Tip Call for Projects until twenty twenty eight. So just to.
So, so let me, if I can just finish wrapping up, like, can, can you identify the ones that, assuming we can get that money at least the first two years, and then after those first two years, I, it's gonna be a new board, you know, I'll be gone, but like, take a shot at some of those to help.
Help fund the C I Ps.
And then move up some of those neighborhood projects because it's not just what was in the criteria. It's literally promises we've made and it's like people's lives, the flooding and the mobility. And it's, some of that's not always a hundred percent reflective, and I appreciate your acknowledgement of that. Uh, but we have made promises and these are like quality of life, human issues in these neighborhoods. Without, it's, I would just ask, can we, can we admit to that? Yeah, let's say if, assuming we can get the first two years, let's do it, put it in some of these that move out, move some things up. Split it into the five year and the ongoing. Um, but then deliberately keep trying to advance these, because like the Seventieth Avenue, Berkeley, all the ones on this, the Goat Hill, the Goat Hill is like, what's so exciting about us getting congressionally directed spending is, I have an article from two thousand and seven in the Denver Post about how Goat Hill's been begging for sidewalks. And this was the first year when we had a neighborhood meeting, I was able to say, look, it's on the project. And we got congressional, just, you know what I mean? And then to have to go back to that same neighborhood, which is the same neighborhood we've identified as our million dollar blocks. Like, these are the most underrepresented neighborhoods. And I know the federal government may not want to hear that as the new criteria, but it's real. And we've been working so hard. And these projects dis- addressed Goat Hill, Berkeley, Twin Lakes. And then we were gonna go up and start working on Derby and Iron Dell and all those other areas. And I just want us to keep focusing on these, because these neighborhood things are, are impacted by all the industrialization in these areas. So I think we can, it's a win-win, and then we need to continue working on the east. And if what we're talking about is knocking off some of these eastern plains things, so it's not disproportionate, we're only focusing on the, we're actually helping the eastern plains. And then I would also support our open space uh prioritization. We tell Byron, start acquiring open space out east around the neighborhoods that are gonna be built. Because that's something Lynn brought up, that if we can't get some of that open space and park stuff now, while it's cheaper, we're gonna be asked to do it later when it's more expensive. And we're showing the folks in the eastern plains that we are very much caring about the whole thing. So that's my request to everyone, it's like, let's, can we, can we use some of, at least just the first two years and dedicate to knocking off some of these projects, which include eastern plain stuff?
So refine the next steps. Yeah, Matt, it's like, I think what I'm hearing is a couple of priorities as we're looking at potential other sources like the Fuel Impact Fund, maybe of really looking at how we might be able to move up some of the neighborhood projects that Steve just mentioned, as well as some of the payment sidewalk um projects that we might want to as a potential repriorization of the midterm list. And I'm assuming that we can come back to you all with some more um work on what this would look like, layering in some of these other uh funding opportunities that we talked about. Kind of look at what that would look like, knowing though that that funding is not committed necessarily. So this is all sort of, you know, if we have it available, if we're able to make it work, what it could look like.
I think so, do you, did you share that list? I can't tell from here, Steve, did all of your projects with the promises make the list overall?
Like in the top two, you mean like, no, not the top one at all, no.
From near, mid, and long term?
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are the ones, and that's literally why it's been my entire focus, because I, I can send you the article, like, it changes everything. Safety, drainage, aesthetics, pride, all of that. That's, that's something that's so damn boring to so many people, but it's one of the most important things. When you see some of these neighborhoods that have been changed with sidewalks, it changes everything.
Oh, yeah, I, I totally agree.
I, I guess, I ask, I guess for our, our team members and stuff like that, you know, one of the things that we, we wanna own is that public engagement piece of it. And, you know, we're, we're more than willing to go out there and fund and tell the community what this potential and new timeframes are. So talking about that uh piece of the puzzle, uh like I said, I know we, we'll work through communications and making, trying to make sure. I just don't know when the right timing for something like that might be and who might uh wanna be part of those kind of efforts, so.
Can, can the commissioners talk to Dion about that? And the reason I say that is I feel like in the conversation last week where we all committed to going back out and talking to the folks at Seventieth, we're talking about now doing it with four or five other communities. And some of that could be wrapped up into a town halls that we might already have planned.
Yes.
But I also think that we keep coming back to the issue of, can we, why are we keep relying on the marketing people in comms to do public engagement? Why do we keep relying on the engineers at Public Works to do public engagement? Nothing against you guys, but like your strengths are to be doing what you're doing here. And, and I, and so I think we still need to address that bigger, broader issue of public engagement in a way that is more intentional, but also doesn't constantly put you guys feeling like you're getting criticized for doing stuff that you're not, that's not your expertise, like, you know? And, and I want, I think it helps you if we could come up with a better way to do it ourselves, like in, in partnership with you, in partnership with comms, but not keep expecting, you know, Peyton Manning to be the kicker of the team.
Right, I take your point.
I think that is a broader conversation, and we've been talking about public engagement in the, the bigger sense for a lot of the projects, not only Public Works, but in a couple of our other more external facings, project based um areas. Been talking with Nikki and team about that, Brian as well, has been part of that conversation. But you're right, I think it's um an effort that we need to strategize a bit and come back with what that actually can look like on the ground. In addition to leveraging the staff that we do have who are managing projects and where they fit into sharing, you know, information and the tools that we're using and the way places where we're sharing information, whether it's the town hall or our website or whatever that is, um, as a piece of that puzzle. Um, I do think it is a, a bigger conversation than just this prioritization. But it's gonna be critical to this project once we get really further out and bring back you know, more of the final, final list for this year, um, how we're talking about it.
That was my question, so after, what's the next step after today's discussion for this list?
So if I'm hearing you all correctly, it sounds like Brian's team will go back and take into account the input that you all shared today. I do wanna make sure that we've captured everything as far as any projects that, you know, how they're prioritized, we wanna uh look at or think about what it would look like to move them. And then I'm gonna propose that we, we come back after you've had a chance to work that into the recommended list so we can come to, this is the, the proposed five year project list for this year. And again, this is gonna be an annual process to review and refine this list. Uh, but that would be my, my recommendation for next steps.
Tell me, Brian, if that's, doesn't fit into your needs.
That sounds great, and I, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, the only thing I'd really like to, to highlight around the fuel impact fees is I think there are potential of a couple of projects, as you mentioned last week, that could be moving forward. But I also wanna have a wider, broader conversation about how we could use those dollars. They're really flexible and I really wanna make sure that they're making some type of meaningful impact for these areas that it was designated for. And so I don't know what that looks like, but it doesn't necessarily need to be roads. Um, it could be other things um that we frankly haven't explored yet. But I wanna keep that door open just so that we can make that decision as a board moving forward about what some of those other projects or investments into that community could be.
Maybe, and could, they could have a smaller dollar amount attached to them.
It could be.
Because if we're not, if it's not. Yutter, you know, type, so it was, so it could, so I mean, so it wouldn't necessarily be an either or, it could be.
It could be an and, yes.
So that would be.
And then we asked for some, some information, you're gonna share the scoring, specifics and the detail of the scoring. Um, if you could find the old PDF, so people don't think I'm totally nuts, I've got like a couple here and there. Like the old ones that show like the history, but, and then find a way to update those project, those project uh updates on the map or somewhere, so people can say, oh, this is what it was as of this day, this is what it was as of this day. I'd rather get hit by somebody saying, why is this taking longer, why is this over budget? Than to have somebody hit us by saying, why are you hiding the ball? That's, that's just part of the trust that we build. And so if you could get us the history of those dates and budgets over time, I think that'll help us kind of be able to say it to a room of folks or individuals that asks, it's like, this is everything, I'm showing you everything and let's, and we own it. Rather than, well, I've got a document that shows you this, why are you hiding that, you know?
Yeah, well, and I also fully expect that to be in scope with how we're engaging publicly differently. Um, and so that website or map or any of the above might not even be what it turns out to be in the end. And maybe we wanna engage in some other format or a different way. But hopefully that's in scope as well, to make sure that it's easily accessible to public, very comprehensive with all of the information we have historically, up to date, and, and so on, so.
Very good, and I'm, I'm thinking that because of the timeliness of the Fuels Impact Program and our comeback to you on that, maybe these conversations need to come back together. Uh, Fuels Impact and your plan conversation or.
Okay.
Yeah.
Agreed, yes.
And also you, there's like a few other sources of funding that you might come back with some ideas on. Like AdCog and some of these others, where you say, hey, this is the time to go for that bridge enterprise fund for this guy. And let's see what we can do the next C dot, or Dr. Cog, AdCog, Brown.
Very good, and I, I don't think my wrap up slides cover anything that our conversation did not. But generally speaking, timeline for the five year plan effort, I'd like to follow and have you all feeling good about uh in context of the twenty twenty six budget. Um, so I will make sure that we are back in front of you timely to follow that track so that you have a five year C I P plan in hand in conjunction with the, the twenty six budget cycle.
Great job.
Thank you so much.
Did you email this?
I'm, I'm doing it now.
Okay.
Okay.